We are now live.
Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I am opening this meeting of the Santa Rosa City School Board today, January 26, 2022. And we are going to start this evening's meeting as we have throughout the year with our territorial land acknowledgement. I'm going to turn it over to Director Medina to help us out.
Thank you. Tonight, it's my honor to present tonight's land acknowledgement. In growing, developing my identity as the son of Mexican immigrant parents, getting in touch with my indigenous roots became important and empowering. Learning about the atrocities and tremendous struggle native peoples have undergone over time is critical. But it's also incredibly important to recognize the hundreds of years of resistance that continues to this day. I hope that our work implementing ethnic studies does the teaching of this history and resistance justice. So tonight, let us begin this meeting by acknowledging that the land on which our district sits and we represent is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Pomo and coastal Miwok peoples who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Nicely done. All right, now if we could all rise and unmute our mics for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
By United States.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic. Which stands.
One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Great. All right. So before we continue our orders of business for the evening and because next week is the beginning of Black History Month, I'd like to ground our meeting tonight with with the opening lines of National Youth Poet Laureate Amanda Gorman's poem, "The Hill We Climb." It's fitting as we go into Black History Month, also fitting because the 2022 Portrait of Sonoma County just came out and it highlights some of the disparities across race, ethnicity, gender that exist in our community, particularly along the lines of education, wealth, and financial attainment. It's also fitting because we're all feeling the downtroddenness of the dark days of winter and the pandemic. And so we all must, for the sake of our students, stay strong. The opening lines. When day comes, we ask ourselves, when can we find light in this never-ending shade? The loss we carry, the sea we must wade. We've braved the belly of the beast. We've learned that quiet isn't always peace. And the norms and notions of what just is, isn't always justice. Amanda Gorman, "The Hill We Climb." We just got to keep climbing. All right, moving on to orders of business. Agenda item C3, report of actions taken in closed session. We have no actions to report. Agenda item C4, items considered in closed session for actions in open session, none. C5, statements of abstention. Are there statements of abstention tonight? All right, seeing none. Moving on to agenda item six, adjustments to the agenda. Board members, are there requests for adjustments to the agenda, staff? Okay, can we go to the public for adjustments on consent items, the F items?
Thank you, President Sheffield. If there are members of the public who would like to comment on any items in the consent part of our agenda, that's the F section of the agenda toward the end of the meeting. This is the time to say that you would like to comment so that that item can be pulled for comment later in the meeting. If you'd like to comment on an F item, please raise your hand. And I am going to call on the people who raised their hands and ask which item you would like to comment on later in the meeting. Carrie Joseph.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'd like to comment on the naming of the Santa Rosa High School track after Doug Quartermarch. I don't know if I'm in the right agenda part of that, though.
You are not. That will come up in the E section and we will let you know when it's time. Thank you very much.
Great. Sorry about that. I'll be.
No worries. Next is Justin England.
Oh, hi there. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, well, I was hoping to comment about the policies of the schools regarding COVID going forward, although I'm not, also not sure if I'm in the right place for that.
Right, that would not be in our F consent items tonight. That would likely be in our public comment on non-agenda items, which is coming up shortly. Okay.
Okay, well, let's just, let's take the mask off the kids. Thanks.
And Amy Smith. Amy, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Did you want to comment on something in the F section of the agenda?
Uh, no, it was the, what the gentleman before me said. I have the same question.
All right. Thank you. That would be the, the public comment on non-agenda items. Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right. Back to the board, any adjustments from the agenda? Okay, moving on to agenda item C7, special presentation for student of the month and certificated classified employees of the month. We are trying something a little different tonight. We're going to, for the sake of time, we're going to see if this process works. And also just for acknowledgement of our students and staff, at this time, if we could bring over our school site staff for the special presentations.
And President Sheffield, they're on their way over.
Thank you. All right. It looks like we have our staff. I think we'll start with Helen Lehman Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Amy Taganashin. I'm the principal at Helen Lehman. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to recognize some really outstanding individuals at my school site. I wanted to begin with the student of the month. Again, a very difficult decision because there are a lot of amazing students at our school. But I have chosen to recognize, along with, in collaboration with staff, a student who is a sixth grade student named Carlos Mathias Sandoval. And to honor Carlos and his family, I would like the opportunity to present this award bilingually. I would like to begin in Spanish. Tenemos el honor de anunciar que Carlos Mathias Sandoval ha sido elegido como estudiante del mes de Helen Lehman. Carlos es un estudiante de sexto grado y ha estado asistiendo Helen Lehman desde kínder. Lo primero que notas al conocer a Carlos es su genuina amabilidad y compasión hacia los demás. Siempre tiene una palabra agradable para compartir con quien se encuentra. Y a menudo toma la iniciativa de acercarse para responder a cualquier necesidad que surja. Carlos es un estudiante bilingüe que ha sido reclasificado como competente en inglés. Sin embargo, continúa utilizando de manera experta sus habilidades como hablante de español para ayudar a sus compañeros de clase cuando sea necesario. También es un estudiante motivado y pone en gran esfuerzo en su aprendizaje. Ha tenido un progreso excepcional, exigiendo los estándares tanto en las pruebas estatales como locales. Cuando se le pregunta por qué le gusta Helen Lehman, Carlos dice, hay mucha gente amable aquí en Helen Lehman. Siempre me ha sentido seguro y espero con ansias venir a la escuela todos los días. El personal de Helen Lehman espera conocer todas las cosas maravillosas que Carlos logre en sus proyectos futuros. Estamos seguros de que seguirá siendo un líder inspirador y hará cambios positivos en nuestro mundo. This is all true, Carlos. I see you there. So we are honored to announce that Carlos Mathias Sandoval has been chosen as Helen Lehman's student of the month. Carlos is a sixth grade student who has been attending Helen Lehman since kindergarten. The first thing that you notice upon meeting Carlos is his genuine kindness and compassion towards others. He always has a nice word to share with whomever he encounters, and he often takes the initiative to reach out and answer any need that arises. Carlos is a bilingual student who has been reclassified to English proficient. However, he continues to expertly utilize his skills as a Spanish speaker to assist his fellow classmates when needed. He also is a very self-motivated student, and he puts great effort into his learning. He has made exceptional progress, exceeding standards in both state and local testing. When asked why he likes Helen Lehman, he says, "There are a lot of kind people at Helen Lehman. I have always felt safe, and I look forward to coming to school every day." The staff of Helen Lehman looks forward to learning all of the wonderful things that Carlos accomplishes in his future endeavors. We are confident that he will continue to be an inspirational leader and make many positive changes in our world. Congratulations, Carlos.
Congratulations, Carlos.
Congratulations, Carlos. We are very proud of you.
Shall I move on to my other members? Wonderful. I would like to next recognize my classified employee of the month, and that is Ms. Jennifer Toscano. Jennifer Toscano is an extraordinary instructional assistant that goes far beyond her duties to ensure that all students have learning opportunities designed to meet their instructional needs. For this reason, she has been chosen as Helen Lehman's classified employee of the month. Jennifer is a graduate of Piner High School, and we have been lucky to have her at Helen Lehman for the past three and a half years. She teaches first through third grade walk-to-read groups, supports the lower grades with games to develop math fluency, and teaches a very fortunate group of emergent bilingual students during English language development. She is incredibly organized and thoughtful and dedicated, which are qualities that come through her every endeavor. Jennifer's favorite part of working at Helen Lehman is being a part of a team that works together towards a common goal of educating the students in the best way possible. She is working towards her Spanish degree at Santa Rosa Junior College, and what she will do beyond that is, she is unsure. I'm trying to get her to become a teacher, though. Whatever she does, we are all confident that she has a very bright and promising future ahead of her. She makes our school a really wonderful place to be. Thank you, Jennifer. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jennifer.
And finally, I would like to recognize one of our certificated members of the staff, Ms. Nellie Augston. Nellie Augston has been dedicated to serving the students and families of Helen Lehman for the past 13 years. She is an outstanding first-grade teacher who embodies a teaching style that touches the hearts and minds of all who enter her classroom. It's an honor to name Nellie Augston as our certificated employee of the month. In my time at Helen Lehman, I have seen that no matter what challenge Nellie encounters, she works to meet it with calm reassurance, empathy, and kindness. She models great perseverance in times of difficulty, and she expertly adapts her instructional practices to meet the needs of all of the diverse learners in her classroom. Her favorite part of working at Helen Lehman is making connections with her students and families, and providing each one of them with a safe and engaging learning environment. She loves to be a part of a staff of caring and dedicated individuals who work well together to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. Her hopes and dreams include continuing to inspire the children in the work that she does and traveling to new places in the coming years. Thank you, Nellie, for making our school a kinder place to be. Congratulations.
Thank you, Nellie.
Thank you, Nellie.
And I thank you again for allowing me to recognize these really amazing people on my staff and in my school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Wagner. And congratulations again to Carlos, Jennifer, and Nellie. And now we will move on to Santa Rosa French American Charter School, and we have Principal Anderson. Hello, Principal Anderson.
Hello, President Sheffield and School Board members. Superintendent Trunell, I thank you also for this opportunity to honor outstanding individuals at our school. First, our student of the month is Leighton Petty. Leighton began her studies at Santa Rosa French American Charter School as a TK student. She is now a bilingual sixth grader who contributes greatly to her school. Leighton is a natural leader. She previously served on the student council and is currently co-president. Her reason for wanting to help lead student council this year is because she felt many meaningful things seemed to disappear with COVID, and she wanted to bring back those fondly remembered parts of school. As one of her teachers said, Leighton is the president of the student council, where she brings her ideas for the well-being of all our community. Leighton appreciates the teachers she's had at French American. She also says the students are nice, and she likes the garden and the fact that parents helped the school a lot. One of her teachers described her as a kind and inclusive student with a great sense of humor. She willingly helps her classmates as needed, is quick to share a funny story with teachers, and generally seems motivated and happy to be at school. Leighton is a great example of what it means to be a scholar. Another teacher said, "She is serious, open-minded, helpful to everyone, responsible, and funny." Outside of school, Leighton enjoys basketball, tennis, swims with the Neptune Swim team, and has been a student of Taekwondo for six years. She current, she is currently studying piano. She played ukulele for four years until lessons stopped because of COVID. Leighton hopes to have a career in healthcare when she grows up. In nominating Leighton, one teacher wrote, "She is a kind and smiling student. She is very attentive to her classmates and always offers her help. She is keen to do well and produce quality work. The serious and regular work she has provided since she joined our school led her to master French today." Felicitación. The SR Facts School community congratulates Leighton Petty for all she's accomplished in elementary school, and we wish her great success in middle school and beyond. Congratulations, Leighton.
Congratulations.
Yay, Leighton. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Leighton.
And now I'd like to recognize our classified employee of the month, Melinda McCullough. There is always sunshine in the library at SR Facts, thanks to the sunny disposition of our library tech, Melinda McCullough. Melinda has worked at Santa Rosa French American Charter School since it opened and was previously library tech at Doyle Park Elementary School for a total of 16 years at this site. As Melinda describes her work, "I love helping kids find books they love to read. I love reading at Storytime. I did Zoom Storytime during distance learning, and that was a lot of fun." Melinda did Zoom Storytime and so much more during distance learning. SR Facts didn't have an IMT when we needed to distribute Chromebooks to every student and then follow up with exchanging broken Chromebooks and ensuring every student had a device. She readily took on this huge job. Happily, she is currently training our new IMT. Melinda makes everything easy. This library is super organized and super clean. Students are very comfortable going to her with any issue, sometimes not even library-related. She goes beyond what is expected of her, and she always has time for anyone who needs her. She is always happy to help. She does seemingly small things that help the whole school run more smoothly, such as assisting with morning arrival. Over the, over the years, Melinda has regularly stepped up to serve on the school advisory board or SOB. She is currently the classified representative and secretary for SOB. Outside of work, Melinda has two grown children who went through Santa Rose, Santa Rosa City Schools. She loves to run, hike, read, garden, and hopes to do more traveling in the future. The Santa Rosa French American Charter School is grateful for all Melinda McCullough does for our school, and we congratulate her on being awarded our classified employee of the month.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Melinda.
Okay, and next I'd like to honor our certificated employee of the month, Mohammed Teab. Mohammed has been a fifth grade teacher at the Santa Rosa French American Charter School for half of the school's existence. He has significantly influenced the school's pedagogy, culture, and structure through his many roles. Mohammed has been a leading member of ELAC, is the certificate, certificated rep on the school advisory board, was a co-lead teacher and served on the leadership team when they had tasks of renewing the charter and upload, updating the LCAP. In addition, he has served on the safety, wellness, and recruitment committees. He teaches soccer as an afternoon school enrichment and helps coordinate the enrichment program for all the teachers. On top of his official roles, Mohammed is an unofficial advisor to many. He is an amazing strategic thinker and has been a great source of solutions for logistical problems, especially with COVID protocols and scheduling. When asked about Mohammed, one teacher said, "When we first arrived in California, he picked us up at the airport, and it was reassuring and comfortable to have a French colleague available after this long first family trip. He supported us in our first steps in our new American life, becoming very quickly our American family member. He took time to give us a lot of information and advice about administrative tasks and everyday life. He was also present and helpful when we were evacuated because of the glass fire only four weeks after we arrived in Santa Rosa. He helped us to keep our family safe. Mohammed is a reference person for us, a linchpin, someone we can trust beyond doubt. And thanks to him, we feel happy to live here, and we're a little worried about our life here without him. That is the essence of Mohammed's impact on our school, always caring and about others, doing what is right, and going above and beyond. Mohammed has fully embraced his exchange visa experience, learning about our American school and the school system. He hopes to continue his connection to Santa Rosa and the spirit of cultural exchange by creating a student exchange opportunity as well as teaching when he returns to France after this school year. Mohammed has taught for 16 years, and 14 of those have been in fifth grade. Above all, Mohammed is an outstanding teacher. Mohammed's two children attended the French American Charter School and are now fluent in English. The Santa Rosa French American Charter School is grateful for all Mohammed did for our school and wish him and his family all the best in their next adventure. Congratulations, Mohammed, for being awarded our certificated employee of the month.
Merci beaucoup.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Principal Anderson, and congratulations again to Leighton, Melinda, and Mohammed. All right, now we are going to move on to agenda item C8, school site parent organization updates. Do we have representatives for Helen Lehman and Santa Rosa French to bring over?
Yes, President Sheffield, our first representative from French American Charter will be Ben Wolf, so I'm going to see if he is online, and he is, so I will be bringing him over now.
Thank you. Hello, Ben. Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Well, good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trunell, members of the board, district leadership. Yeah, my name is Ben Wolf. I'm president of the Parent Association for the French American Charter School. I've got two kiddos attending SR Facts. My daughter is in fifth grade, and she's been there since TK as well, and my son just started kindergarten and is having a great time there, getting, especially going in person right now. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for supporting language immersion, immersion education in our district, both at SR Facts but also at CCLA. I think it's great to have language learning opportunities like these, especially in a public, public school system like we have here. I'd also like to give a shout out to our teacher of the month, Mohammed, that we just talked about, who's a great influence of the school. He also happens to be my daughter's teacher this year, and Evelyn didn't mention this, but he's also a member of the Parent Association, and I work with him quite often on that. Great, great guy to have around. Love to give a shout out also to Melinda. I think the descriptor of sunshine at the library is perfect for her. And also a shout out to Leighton, who I believe many of you met recently on a video message that she helped put together with the fellow, her fellow sixth graders and the class, talking about their interest in a potential French middle school program in the future. So to state the obvious, the past two years have been challenging, but through all these things, we've seen our community come together in all sorts of new ways that we didn't have to before, but we have innovated and found ways to bring community together and support each other in the school. I'd like to take my time tonight just to highlight a couple examples of how the parent community at SR Facts has engaged in supporting the school, the teachers, and the students this year in particular. So to start off with, parent donations, fundraising efforts have supported things throughout the year and the history of the school, but have supported things such as the visas for our teachers, classroom supplies, supplies for the students, tutoring, after-school enrichment opportunities, the school accreditation fees, and many more things that just come up, field trips when we were able to do those as well, many other things that have been supported through parent donations and fundraising. In fact, this past year, just, just recently, we were able to revisit a tradition that we started a few years ago called Grant a Teacher's Wish Campaign, which starts off on Giving Tuesday just after Thanksgiving and runs through December. It's an event that allows teachers to post their, their wish list of things that they'd like to have, additional for their classrooms, specific items, and then allows parents to fulfill those wishes throughout that timeframe. It's, it's a really engaging event, fundraising event really, but engaging event for the parents to feel involved in their, their classroom, to help out the teachers and support them. And after missing last year with distance learning, we're able to do it again this year and had a great response, and we're able to fulfill all of the requests that we had there. And also, we've also been able to establish parent representatives in every classroom this year, and that's been really key for us because it's helped connect parents to volunteer opportunities, and it's really worked, they've really worked to engage parents when in-person interactions have been limited, which has been especially useful for new families joining the school and new teachers that have joined the school as well. There's many other examples, such as we recently decided we're going to give special recognition to all the substitutes that have been helping us out this year in particular. We've had parents that have, for a long history, but have created a garden space for our students to learn gardening and growing food there. We also have had various dine and donate events throughout the year for fundraising. List goes on. So it's super involved parent community. That's been great. I would like to finish on one topic, the, which is the potential seventh, eighth grade program. I know that you've heard from a number of parents over the past several board meetings and received email messages expressing support for continued French immersion middle school option. And I know recently received a signed letter, which was signed by just over 300 parents, expressing their support for middle school as well. I just want to say, as you know, interest is high, not only with our sixth grade families that are in process of making a decision now about middle school for this next year, but also with the families of younger students who would love to know that their kids have an option of French immersion through eighth grade and maybe even through 12th grade in the future with the French IB option. So I'd just like to thank you for your, your continued support. We really appreciate it, and thank you for the time this evening.
Great report. Thank you, Ben. Very nice update. All right, and do we have a representative parent from, from Helen Lehman?
Yes, that will be two individuals, Maria Rivera and Elvia Silva, so I will be bringing them over now.
Thank you.
Elvia, if you were present, could you please raise your hand? Thank you.
Hi.
Maria and Elvia. Welcome, Marie. Welcome, Elvia.
My name is Maria Rivera. I don't know if you, Elvia is here?
Elvia is here.
Yeah, I'm here, but.
All right, we have both of you. All right, we have both of you.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Elvia Silva.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, I think we are ready for your update.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maria Rivera, I'm the president of the PFO and the Hella Light Elementary School. And we just have a, say, our goals for this year. Their PFO goals, calls, fundraising events, we use to fund raises and support the childrens in the school. We also use the funds to create a sense of community in a school, support teachers and support the teachers. We hope we continue supporting the school programs as, as ambassadors, something?
Ambassador.
And, yeah.
Letters.
So we're here to work and Elvia is the vice president?
I'm the treasurer.
Oh, treasurer, I'm sorry. So she's gonna say in Spanish.
Ah, mi nombre es Elvia Silva, soy la tesorera del PFO de Helen Lehman School. Tengo dos niños en la escuela y pues nosotros nuestras metas para PFO es realizar eventos y recaudar fondos para ayudar a los niños, a los maestros, a la escuela y para crear un sentido de comunidad y seguir apoyando los programas como Ambassador School que motiva a los niños a ayudar a otros niños en la escuela y a solucionar problemas entre los niños.
So I do happen to be present, so I can go ahead and translate if you'd like, with your permission, Mr. President?
Yeah, I was just saying that Maria and me told, but she say in English and me in Spanish, but I was the same.
Okay. Well, I, I just, she, she did mention that she's a treasurer, that she has two children who go to Helen Lehman School and that their goals are to raise money and to support events at the school and also to support the school ambassadors program to help solve problems at the school site. So as she said, basically the same thing.
Well, all right, well, thank you so much, Maria and Elvia, for your update.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Muchas gracias por todo su trabajo bonito.
Thank you. All right, we are going to keep moving along, we have a long agenda. We are on Agenda Item C9, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. So we're gonna open it up for public comment, non-agenda items. We have made room so our students can go first and do we have, do we have public wanting to speak?
If there are members of the public who would like to speak, it would be nice if our students, if there are any students who would like to comment during public comment now, if they raise their hands first. And now we'll just open it up to anyone to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. And President Sheffield, two minutes for the comment, correct?
Correct, two minutes, thank you.
Okay, so our first comment, two-minute comment, is Shelby Pryor.
Hello, good evening, thank you for taking the time to listen to me as usual. I am here again for the same things as that I always am, which is, we need to stop these mandates, we need to stop forcing our children into basically a form of slavery. Being a black community member, it really is repulsive that we're going into Black History Month and we're going to be practicing the same exact explicit ideas that have been going on through racism since 1964. Before that, it's also disparaging to think that you would quote, Mr. Sheffield, in the beginning of this, about equality and equity and all the things that we talk about and none of it actually is represented to the community, to Ms. De La Cruz, to Ms. Manary. Guess what? As a black person, I don't want to hear Latinx come out of your mouth. I'm sick and tired of that. Black people changed their last name to X because they didn't have a history. For you taking our history and trying to inculcate it into your nonsense makes us very infuriated. There are a couple things that are going on in our community as a blacks member of this community that we don't have to explain to you and we shouldn't have to explain to you. We've been continually told how to act, how to feel and how to think by this organization and the way that it has been bringing us up. We have never been equitably represented in this community. Ms. De La Cruz forgot Mr. Sheffield was black when she was acknowledging black people in the community. These are things that I'm gonna continue to force and push and make sure you feel uncomfortable about. It's very interesting that all the time that we spend on trying to force and mandate things for individuals, we're not looking through a telescope of understanding of what individuals' needs are. It is not my job to protect any of you on this board, it is not your job to try to protect me. Think about our children, think about the fact that you're forcing EUA products into them. Think about the fact that an EUA product cannot be mandated or forced on children, period. And if you continue to do this, you're just going ahead and advancing the system in which you so much supposedly don't want to help constrict us as.
Mr. Pryor, your time is up. We have to move on to the next public comment and two-minute time limit, it's Amy Carter.
Good evening. It's a, there we go, good evening, it's a pleasure to be here with you virtually. My name is Dr. Amy Carter and I'm a candidate for the Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools. I've already connected with many of you and had the opportunity to talk to Superintendent Trunell about the, the needs of Santa Rosa. And I'm here tonight just to learn more about your focus as a board and your school community. I also want to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to board members, teachers, staff, students, administrators, parents, to hear their thoughts about the challenges and opportunities that we currently face. You can learn more or reach out to me at my website, which is Carter and the number four, schools.org. Happy to meet with, with anybody that's passionate about children or equity or, or education, would love to hear your thoughts. I'm so grateful for the service of this board during such a difficult time. The portrait of Sonoma is really a reminder that we need moral, equity-based leadership more than ever before and I deeply appreciate your service. Again, please don't hesitate to reach out to me to discuss your priorities or what I can do for schools and I look forward to chatting with you, thank you so much.
Thank you, next is Amy Smith.
Hello. Can, oh.
We can hear you, Amy.
You can hear me, okay, good. So my concern is also the masks in school and the testing and this general consensus of vaccines. And I was flipping through news channels and came across C-SPAN Monday morning, the 24th. And there was a panel of doctors and scientists meeting with a member of Congress and it was on C-SPAN. And they were talking about what they found with masks, wearing masks, what the vaccines do, any, at the side effects. And I was hoping that, I wondered if any of you guys had heard about it or researched this. It was a five-hour session and members of the press were there and it was not partisan. So I would really encourage people in charge, because you're making policies that affect our kids, if you would be so kind as to watch it. Just wanted to put that out there, did any of you know about it? Hello?
Ms. Smith, this is not a question and answer, it's strictly public comment, is that your comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there because there's a lot of scientific evidence that goes against wearing masks and the tests they say are ineffective. And that they talk about myocarditis in children. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment, next is Justin England. Two-minute time limit, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for your time, I just want to talk briefly about why many people think it's time for Santa Rosa schools to begin the process of returning things to normal for the kids. Over half the school districts in the country already have returned to normal and are no longer requiring masks in school and are no longer testing and quarantining asymptomatic kids. Many policymakers around the country, even here in California, are now acknowledging that COVID is endemic and there will continue to be seasonal surges regardless of what measures we have in place. This, however, does not need to be a cause for concern because the vast majority of the population, especially here in highly vaccinated Sonoma County, the virus poses very little risk to most people. Children are at very low risk of serious illness even without vaccination and of course, they can also now be vaccinated. And vaccinated adults, teachers, staff are also at very low risk of serious illness. And so considering the low risk of serious illness and the fact that COVID is endemic and everyone is going to eventually get it anyway, the masks are at this point providing very little additional benefit. This is why many doctors and public health experts here in the Bay Area are now calling for transitioning life back to normal for the kids, especially because the masks are not harm-free, they do harm their educational experience, they do harm their ability to have normal social interactions, which is so important for their development and so important for their mental health. And so for all those reasons, the masks make very little sense at this point. And the best thing to do for the children is to allow them to return to normal life, thank you.
Thank you, next public comment on a non-agenda item is Maria Porter.
Oh, hello, my name's Maria Porter, I'm a speech-language pathologist and a community member. And I'd like to just second what the last speaker said about moving towards an endemic, that, you know, this is no longer causing, you know, a huge public threat the way it was. We can see that our hospital numbers are not overloaded and the curb seems to be dropping. Also like to second all of the effects that it's happening with the social aspect for children, especially children with autism and ADHD and those that really need the facial features in order to understand emotion. And also as just a concerned parent, my daughter does not feel safe, in my opinion, without wearing the mask. She wears it all the time in the car, in her room, and I just don't know like what that's doing to her mental health. So I'm just worried about that. And there was also new guidelines as of the 12th of January from the state of California that now they, they're not recommending masks outdoors. So that's like kind of in the same step of like, we're getting rid of masks, they're no longer effective. And with the new data that's saying that the KN95 and the N95 people can mask themselves. So now we don't need other people to, you know, especially children to protect us, we can protect ourselves by putting on those N95s. And thank you everybody for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, next is Deanna Oliveras.
Hello, Board and Superintendent. I never really know what to say on public comment because I have so much to say. But as I was thinking about what I should say, I feel like it boils down to this. I feel like, I feel like the, I feel like this school board is kind of out of the loop or out of the feels on a lot of what is happening on campuses and how parents are feeling and how students are feeling. And when I say out of the loop, I don't mean, maybe you guys might know what the majority, maybe 50% or 60% of parents feel, but the other 40 or 30%, I think we matter too. And I think it's really important that you start actually getting to know the demographic of your schools. And I know you do these quick little visits throughout the year, but I don't know if you're supposed to visit whatever schools are in your district, the trustees district or not, but I would really appreciate it, especially since you are all voted in members. Visit PTA meetings and parent club meetings and faculties, faculty meetings and actually talk and get to know parents and show up at PTA meetings and really get to know the campuses because all campuses are so different, they have different things they want to focus on, they have different worries and concerns. And I would really appreciate it if you really got to know us and did some town halls and got to know us personally instead of just behind a Zoom screen because that's what makes this whole, that's what makes this whole thing like very impersonal and it makes us feel like we're not heard. And I would just ask you this coming year to really show us that you care and you want to get to know us and be on those campuses with our kids and go to those PTA meetings and talk to the staff and really show us that you actually do care about how we feel, thank you.
Thank you, and next comment on a non-agenda item is Liz Birch.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry, I came in late to the meeting and I'm not sure what was said before, but I am here urgently to say the following. I support mandates at this point, I don't know what else to do, I support the mandates. I want my child to have the choice to grow up. I want my child to have the choice to stay in school and see her friends and have a normal life. Unfortunately, not everyone is doing the selfless thing that we all are doing, who are doing the selfless thing, which is to get the vaccines, which has not been hard actually, to wear the masks, which is annoying and uncomfortable, but quite doable to social distance and to take care of our teachers and everyone else around us. Would I rather not do any of these things? Absolutely. I would rather have things be back to normal and none of this have ever happened. Do I like fighting with other parents and people about this? No, I do not. I don't want to offend anyone. But this is life and this is death, this is life and death. And the surge is enormous, it is not going down, it's not going away. I can't believe that people are saying that, that is absolutely false. I am fed up and I'm frustrated. I want this to end and there is no other way to do it but with a mandate at this point. And I'm sorry that people don't like that, I don't like it either, thank you.
Thank you, next comment is Sheila Walker.
Hi, good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Trunell. I was actually planning not to speak, but I feel like I must speak after the, the previous speaker. I, I want to just quickly say that no one is saying that, that COVID is not real. When parents or community members or doctors and scientists, mental health experts are all saying that we've got an urgency to get back to normal for children. That's not saying that we don't believe that COVID is real. It's not to say that there aren't risks with everything that we do, each and every one of us, every time we walk out the door of our homes. So I want to point out that there's a new website, it's called Urgency of Normal and it's doctors across the country who have put together tips for parents, teachers, and school districts for us to make plans to get back to normal. There's all kinds of data that they put into one document and there's, it certainly includes how we can still protect the vulnerable. No one, including myself, wants people that are vulnerable to not be protected. But we're in a different place when we approach March of this year than we were two years ago. And if people do not think that masks and all of these mandates and closing the schools do not impact children, I encourage you to reach out to me, I will give you personal stories. It does impact children and teens and youths. We have to get them back to normal, there are risks with every. everything that we do and we can't protect everyone from the flu and everything else out there.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. And thank you all who spoke on your issues and concerns. We are going to pause briefly for an interpreter switch before we jump into our reports.
Thank you, President Sheffield. It looks like we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Deana. All right, we are ready to go. D reports, we're going to start with D1, California School Employee Association, CSEA report. Do we have President Lehman or Representative from CSEA?
There will be no report for CSEA this evening.
Thank you. All right. D2, Santa Rosa Teacher Association. Catherine, President Howell?
She's on her way over.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. President Sheffield and members of the board. Good to see you. Superintendent Anna Trinell, second meeting today. I want to start by saying congratulations and a shout out to our school counselors who are going to be honored later in the meeting. And Ever Flores, school counselor extraordinaire, also deserves a little shout out for that. In Santa Rosa City Schools, we wouldn't be functioning without our counselors right now. Our student mental health is so important. And you know, the, just the, all of the stuff going on, credit recovery from last year, and of course, AB130, the independent study program that our counselors have put a lot of time into making sure kids are in the right place and in the right courses. So in addition to just talking to the kids, making connections, we honor and appreciate our school counselors every moment. Moving on from there, Santa Rosa TA, Santa Rosa SRTA is standing with our CSEA Chapter 75, brothers and sisters, as they have their negotiation openers tonight. We hope that you are going to be able to have fair negotiations for their equitable living wages. The CSEA, our schools wouldn't be functioning without our CSEA members, you know, the custodians keeping us clean and safe and the yard duty and the instructional aides and the library techs and every single CSEA person in the offices and just all of them, you know, the schools would shut down if we didn't have good CSEA people. So we're standing with them. In terms of other standing, we are SRTA standing in support of Rona Park Kattati Educators Association as they are continuing their negotiations for fair and living wage in this county. And along with that, want to thank this board for prioritizing the teachers in Santa Rosa in the budget and getting us, you know, approving our 15% over three-year contract and, you know, raising the bar in Sonoma County, making a statement that, you know, prioritizing teachers, prioritizing teachers is important. And we're hoping that the administration of Ripsia, of Rona Park Kattati Union School District is hearing that same message. So and then my final thing I need to talk about tonight is about campus culture and a little, and I sound a little bit like a broken record, but just campus safety and the need for more adults on our campuses. We actually, SRTA did a survey. We only got about a 20% response, which is not great, but frankly, one more thing is just one thing too many for a lot of our teachers. So I just want to share with you a little bit. We asked about COVID safety and we also asked about just safety in general on campuses. There is concern about masking that has been improving over the past few weeks. A lot of sort of lax discipline that has really been tightening up and we appreciate the efforts of all of our administrators to enforce our masking mandates on our campuses, keeping the students safe, keeping the teachers and staff safe. But we do have a lot of concerns just about sort of not just COVID safety, but personal safety. You know, we have had lots of school shooting threats, various, you know, social media threats over the school year, an incident just today. And there's concern at every school site about the safe, their safe, the teacher's safety, the student's safety when they walk onto a site, mostly because there just simply aren't enough people. 86% of the people that responded to our survey said there's not enough staff on our sites to assist our students. And that is, you know, yard supervision, recess supervision, lunch, but it's also instructional aides in classrooms with the teachers. It's a lack of sort of intervention specialists when it comes to, you know, the MTSS people, intervention counselor and therapists, restorative, you know, we need people that the kids can trust that are on the school sites that they can go to when things are, you know, troublesome, when things are worrisome. And we just need more of a presence of supervisors on our school sites throughout our school days to sort of calm people down and, and, and create a safer environment where it's so much going on with our students. So 58% of our, the people that responded to our survey said that they don't really feel like there is a plan in place for communicating with their administration privately, like if there's something going on in a classroom or there's a student that is, you know, there's an incident or something going on, how do you contact the administration in front of other students without creating undue alarm? And we really don't have a way to do that. So I'm just putting those things out there for you to hear that, that I've heard personally, teachers have told me this year that they're taking PN days to, to take a day off because they're actually afraid to go to school. And these are the teachers, not just the kids, right? And, you know, people are at their breaking point. And this, you know, is indicative of what's going on with the mental health of our students and the stress of the past two years. And it all just seems to come to a boiling point at our school sites. And, you know, I don't know how to alleviate it. One suggestion I have is to please let our administrators be administrators. I know we've had a lot of sub-problems, sub-sur shortages, and thankfully, we had administrators to step into those classrooms and, you know, work one-on-one with our students. But it has been to the detriment, in many cases, of them doing their jobs, which is, you know, being present on the entire campus. So I would ask that you think about that solution to the substitute problem of putting administrators in classrooms and try to end that practice just so that our administrators are available to all the teachers when we need them. And that would help and go a long ways towards making our campuses a little bit safer. So, thank you. And that's, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, President Howell. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to D3, our superintendent report.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Board. Good evening, staff and community. Today marks day 102 of school. Monday actually marked 100 days of school, and I am sure that there were many activities out in our schools to recognize this. I understand that there are photos on social media to document that. So here we are, day 102. I want to speak to some of the school updates for staying open and safe. I want to acknowledge what President Howell has just shared about safety. We share the similar concern about how to continuously keep our schools safe, knowing that we have staff that are trying everything they can to care for and keep our campuses and our district safe. I want to just acknowledge that President Howell and I have started to meet every week as of this month of January so that we can work out concerns as they come and come up with solutions together, which we actually did today to talk about the very thing that she has shared openly. We will certainly be following up with our school sites, especially if there are questions about the school site safety plans to reinforce what the protocols are. We certainly saw that model today with one of our schools who was experiencing a situation. And we're very grateful to the principal and staff and students who responded immediately and safely with that situation, as well as the law enforcement's immediate response to our needs. So we, this is an ongoing conversation. We know that schools need to stay safe every day and we are working towards that end as we continue to work through various scenarios that are in part outside of our control, but certainly ready to respond when they do present themselves. Some other updates that I want to give that are COVID related, based on our last board meeting, we are ordering tents for outdoor eating and we are working with our school sites and will be working with our school sites on the logistics around that because each school and their outdoor eating areas are unique. I also want to acknowledge that our case rates are dropping. We are tracking this information and people can find that information on our web, on our website under COVID-19. We also sent some information out this week to our families that I just want to reiterate that we've begun the health, the daily health screener through Parent Square. If you are not signed up for that and you have questions, please reach out to your school site so that we can assist you. We're also beginning elementary pool testing next week and we're looking for more enrollment and we're sending out mailers to anyone who has not responded electronically. So please be looking for that through your mail. Other updates, we are working with our human resources department to continue to collect information from our employees about their vaccination status and their boosters, and then also beginning the process of twice-weekly testing in February per the governor's order. We have ordered additional rapid antigen tests and those are being sent out to school sites to give staff and students a test if they need one for their early return on day six from isolation or quarantine. A couple of other mentions here, just a reminder that there is no school tomorrow for students. This is a staff workday. It's a, an internal professional development day for our staff, but school will resume on Friday as normal. And then I just want to do a shout out to the two, the two sites that started our school reports this evening and their bravery, the parents and students and staff who were all recognized tonight. We certainly appreciate this opportunity. I want to point out that our school reports from our principals can be found under the information items, section number five in the agenda tonight. And there are videos there from each principal and we encourage you to view those reports when you have the time. And with that, that concludes my report, President Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. All right, I do not have a board president report, but we do have board member reports and we're going to start with Director Beard, item D5, board member reports.
Evening, everybody. My name is Georgia. I am a student at Montgomery and what my report on is in regard to mask mandates, the concept of normalcy at our school and everything in that category. So at my school, masks aren't extremely enforced outdoors, but students still keep them up. And this is because we're aware that COVID exists and some people say that it's inevitable that everyone's going to get it, but we feel that normalcy in our school is being able to show up and feel safe and masks help us feel like safe outside and inside of our classrooms. It's not just about getting COVID or not getting COVID at this point because we know that it's not necessarily fatal to us as students, but there is still the possibility of creating variants and then spreading it to our families who will have a harder time with COVID. It's, we, most students do not see this as an infringement on our rights or anything that's restricting like our sense of normalcy. I think masks are pretty normalized in classrooms and it's not something that should be taken away because I think it makes students feel more safe than anything else.
Thank you so much, Georgia. And it looks like we have Trustee Manieri.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a quick report and thank you, Georgia, for that awesome report. That was really great. And so I just, I received a message today from a parent who would just like me to share something with, with the board and I think with the community at large. There is going to be a listening session coming up on February 1st in English and in Spanish, two separate times, for folks that want to share their thoughts and what it is that their needs are with regard to dual immersion in our district. So this is a meeting that is going to be facilitated by Karina Huey, who has done really great equity work with our students and elevating student voices in our district. And so I am extending this invitation on behalf of parents who have shared this with me. There is a Zoom link. I'm not sure how we can get this information out a little bit more broadly, but I can share the dates and the times. So February 1st, the English Listening Session will take place from 6:00 to 6:45 and the Spanish Session from 6:45 to 7:30. This is being coordinated through CCLA, LCL and High School and the Santa Rosa City Schools Directors of Multilingual Services and Career Technical Education. So again, if anybody would like to elevate what it is that their students need, if you're a student, what you need and what you hope a dual immersion program might provide for our district.
Thank you, Trustee Manieri. Other board member reports? I see Director De La Cruz's hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to announce that the Portrait of Sonoma 2021 update has been released. It was launched tonight. It provides really critical information and data to drive important focused investments in specific geographies and in populations who still are experiencing great inequity in overall health and wellbeing in our community. Those disparities are largely around race and ethnicity. And it's a really compelling read. I also just wanted to mention that because we're relying on pretty traditional data collection standards, those can result in people essentially being deemed as quote-unquote statistically insignificant. And this portrait and the folks who really worked hard to make sure that that standard does not apply to human beings in our community. No one is insignificant and no one should be invisible. And so I think this is a wonderful learning tool for many folks in our community to really get comfortable with who we are and what it looks like to live in one community versus what it looks like to live in another community and to recognize the importance of closing some of those gaps. And closing those gaps ultimately makes our entire community healthier, safer, and happier. So there's global data that shows that when you kind of shrink those inequities, that an overall community's happiness is elevated. And so I just really want to end with, with that note and invite you all to take a peek a peek at the Portrait of Sonoma. I'm really proud of the work, and I'm hoping that it also really helps our, our district to be really richly data-informed, so that we can be focused in the ways in which we are using our resources, you know, making decisions around where we focus and how we focus, and with a lot of love and with an asset frame in the way that we understand. You know, the the importance of recognizing that communities that are experiencing inequity aren't coming at this with needs or with you know, with needs or, or, or some, or some deficit, but really recognizing that there is a wealth, and there are incredible untapped assets in these communities that we still have not figured out how to activate and how to really kind of build our democracy to make it that much stronger. So the, the overall focus of the Portrait of Sonoma 2021 is to recognize that those folks who are closest to the challenges that the report identifies are also closest to the solutions, although they may be farthest from the power and the resources to make those changes. Those are the voices that we really need to elevate. So everybody, please take a look at the portrait update, and thank you very, very much, President Sheffield, for giving me a moment to talk about that.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz. Yeah, I, I was able to find the report on the county website. You know, we'll make sure that we can make it available for, for staff. A lot of valuable information there and some interesting shifts from the 2014 report. Other board members? Reports? Seeing none, moving on to D six, CSBA report. Do we have a CSBA report tonight?
I do, which is a very short one. Just letting you and the rest of the board know that I didn't meet with our public affairs and community engagement representative, Laura Green, and I'm looking forward to meeting with her like twice a month to make sure that we have, you know, occasional legislative updates for the board. But at this point, the nomination process for to be the official nominee will be done by March, so I'm still not the official person, and that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. I think we might have one more report.
President Sheffield, was that a prompt for me? I apologize.
I, I'm sorry. I, yes. For you, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And one of the things that I failed to also mention, and I thank Director Manieri for talking about the forum next week. Also, we have our Youth Truth Survey that is still active, and it closes this Friday. So we really need to hear from our families, our students and our staff about how we're doing. So you can find the link to the Youth Truth Survey directly on our website. It is in Spanish and English, and please take this opportunity to let us know how we're doing and what we can be doing better and what we're doing well. And specifically, we want to make sure we emphasize that we are listening, and we want to hear from you. So thank you, President Sheffield, for giving me that opportunity.
You bet. Some good information. All right, we are going to move on to our E discussion action items. E one, an action item. This is a public board meeting via teleconference per AB three sixty-one. Here we go again. I'm going to turn it over to you, Superintendent Trenell.
Thank you, President Sheffield, members of the board, community and staff. So as we continue to be under an emergency order, the board will be asked to, at this time, continue to consider the continuance of our, of our board meetings in a virtual capacity. This needs to be done every thirty days. And I hand it back to you, President Sheffield, for the board to consider.
All right, questions from the board at this time? Any questions about our periodic revisiting of this agenda item?
I guess I just wanted to raise this question around whether or not we had collected data on participation over time. I know that was one of the questions that the board considered during the last time we had this conversation. And also just an update on, I, I know you did and presented some really important data on the number of staff hours and number of staff people it would take to be in person, and wonder if there were any updates to that information as well, given, given our, our priorities and where we really want to be directing energy and resources. That is in short supply.
President Sheffield, would you like me to address the question now or wait for other questions?
Go ahead. I, we'll just have, bring the questions if they come.
Okay. Director De La Cruz, if you would like a spreadsheet, for example, we could do that. I believe, I, I guess my, my, I addressed it maybe in general at the last meeting, that what we are seeing is that for individuals who are attending virtually, we have way more people, not to get too statistical, but we have, we have way more people participating virtually than we did in person. We would have to go back. I don't recall if we took sign-ins when we were in person. And, and so that would be really a, a narrative of what we might recall. We wouldn't have that data by board meeting per se. But what we do know is that we are seeing more people participating, or at least joining us, while our meetings are virtual. The other thing that I don't think I made very clear last time is if we do, and the board does decide to return in person, the suggestion would be that we do a hybrid, and I know that is an interest of the board, but that we would offer a hybrid model, so that we would have limited capacity seating indoors, and we would continue to offer the board meeting virtually for those, which is why we would have the video cameras going and the live feed going during the board meeting with the recording as, as usual. And there's no other updates on the actual setup. We are ready to go, and I believe that some additional equipment would need to be purchased in order for us to make it happen, but that it is possible to do so as we did a mock run-through of that process. But we would have the ability to continue to invite people to participate with us virtually, as well as have some limited seating indoors, if that was the pleasure of the board.
I just want to, one, one further question, the, the pleasure of the board and also consistent with county mandates around limited numbers of people indoors. Is that correct? We're under a stricter health order now than we have been in the past since we've considered this question.
Correct, and that order sunsets on February eleventh at this particular time. But right now, the mandate is, as of this evening, the mandate is no more than fifty people total in a space. And then outdoors, it's one hundred people with social distancing.
Thank you.
Board members, other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move, this is a action, I will move to public comment. If we can open it up, see if we have comments from the public.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E one, please raise your hand at this time. It's a two-minute time limit. Our first comment is Janelle Payne.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janelle Payne. I'm a teacher in the district. I did miss public comment, but I'm going to make my comment here because it is about Zoom meetings. So benefits of Zoom meetings were celebrated at the last board meeting by board members. And again, tonight, Zoom is safer for sure. It also leads, though, to more engagement. It's more convenient. It's certainly more comfortable. And so knowing that you see the value in the Zoom meetings as being more comfortable, more convenient, and, and leading to that higher engagement, I wonder why you will not allow your staff to enjoy these benefits during professional development opportunities? Requiring us to report to school sites tomorrow for a day of back-to-back-to-back Zoom meetings feels incredibly disrespectful. It's been well documented that teachers are not only burnt out, but entirely demoralized as a result of three straight years of COVID, laying waste to our passion and our profession, and suffering constant attacks by the community at large. Teachers are indeed hanging on by a thread, as Catherine Howell said earlier. This district, like many others, continues to extol self-care as a solution, which is nice in theory, but also feels like one more thing. So I plead with you tonight, while you consider your own continuance of Zoom meetings, it is not too late to show your staff that you respect us, that you trust us, that you actually do value us as human beings, and that you recognize that too many of us aren't thriving, but we are surviving. We are hanging on by a thread, and folks are taking personal days because we don't feel safe. What good does it serve to require us to report to school sites tomorrow for professional development? Do an all-call tonight and tell your staff to stay home and participate virtually in Zoom meetings like you are doing tonight from the comfort of your homes. Thank you.
Thank you, and there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion? Let's see, Trustee McCormick's hand raised?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve E one, public board meetings via teleconference per AB three sixty-one.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Trustee McCormick and seconded by Trustee Flores. All right. And we will
That was seconded by Trustee Medina.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hands no, didn't raise. I just heard voices. Okay. Let's correct that. Seconded by Trustee Medina. All right, well, ready for a vote?
Director Beard.
I believe Director Beard, did she leave?
She had to step out for a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Director McCormick.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Fong.
I.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, the motion carries. Approved, moving on to agenda item E two. This is a discussion item. We are going to have Dr. Armstrong and staff open us up with a discussion on the Panorama Survey, strengths-based, social-emotional survey identifying student needs. Hello, Dr. Armstrong.
Good evening, and Kesa Inamark and Eric Loefchi should be brought over. President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trenell, members of Santa Rosa City Schools and guests. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, Associate Superintendent of Educational Services. Interrupting inequities, eliminating barriers, and being held accountable by our students, families, and community partners for the work that is needed to improve our schools and outcomes for our kids is a game changer for us in ed services. I truly believe that social-emotional learning is a process that moves us that much closer to educational equity. Now, I do like to bring forth my team, and not as sole owners of this work, but as chief champions and innovative officers. The two before you that will be speaking tonight are known for their kindness, their steadfast focus on our kids, their kindness, and their heart. Their leadership skills is what enables this to be productive. And so on behalf of the Educational Services Department, Kesa Inamark and Eric Loefchi will present for your discussion on the Panorama Survey. The floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. If you're at home washing your dishes or there at home tonight on your computer, welcome. My name is Kesa Inamark, and we're just going to kick this off. We'll go ahead and go to slide two, Eric.
There you go, Kesa.
I think one more report. There we go. Social emotional wellness is essential to academic progress. As a response to the MVP and priority two with whole-person focus, Santa Rosa City Schools has systematized a way to learn more about and to be able to monitor the social-emotional well-being and the social-emotional learning of all of our students. The fall of 2021 was the first implementation of the Panorama Survey, where we had a completion rate of over eighty percent in our, in our collection of baseline data. Only one percent of our students opted out. We learned from our Panorama partners that getting an eighty percent completion rate on a first round of implementation was impressive. And generally, they have a goal of seventy percent for first-time districts. You are likely familiar with our famous MTS test or multi-tiered system of support pyramid. And you'll see the orange arrow that points to the Panorama Survey, which is a safety net of sorts, enabling staff to identify needs and needs of additional support, as well as see school-wide and district-wide trends in order to strategize and plan a coordinated response for improving SEL, or social-emotional learning skills, and a sense of well-being. This is our universal screener. It's a systematic approach to catching students that other referrals might miss. Well, the background on the evolution of BEST Plus to MTSS is that from 2014 to 2019, you may recall, we had a three-point-five-million-dollar grant over a five-year period where we intentionally blended restorative practices and PBIS, or positive behavioral interventions and supports. And after that grant, we kept the same features of RP and PBIS with a bigger view to encompass the academics, and we called it MTSS, and this is a similar trend throughout the nation. And through this relational focus, you may recall our stickers and the logo of the connection before content or connection through content. We can see that this relational approach has actually made a difference in our schools, and the Panorama Survey is showing us initial findings about the efficacy of this work.
Hi, everybody. SEL and mental health are connected, and this slide starts showing us that connection a little bit through the process of well-being. We have often come here and said that we see social-emotional learning as the tier-one level of interventions for mental health and wellness for our students. It's important to acknowledge that panorama is not a mental, we're not screening for mental illnesses. We're not, you know, trying to get at depressed students or students with anxiety. We're looking for strengths. And we do get information about student SEL and their well-being. It may be helpful to think about SEL in the context of academic motivation, self-regulation, social relationships, while well-being is more about our emotions, joy, anger, anxiety, and more global self-reflection. So how satisfied we are with life, how we're moving through this world, the Panorama Screamer creates a score for each student in SEL and well-being. In order to select a SEL screening program, we established a committee, and during the spring semester in 2021, our committee representing employees from across the district went through a series of six-meeting to choose a SEL screening program. We ended up choosing Panorama and the company Panorama Education. Recently, in October, we surveyed all levels, and for K to three, teachers fill out the surveys for their students. And in fourth through twelfth grade, it's a student-completed survey. Students do it in about ten minutes, and they're asked twenty-nine questions that are, that are the, the center of the Panorama Survey, and they focus on social-emotional competencies and well-beings. The survey topics that we surveyed, we could choose, were positive feelings, challenging feelings, self-efficacy, supportive relationships, and classroom effort. We can see that ten thousand four hundred and six students in four to twelve completed the survey. Two thousand two hundred and five teachers completed the, the teacher part of the survey. And it's pretty incredible, actually, to see that kind of response rate. This survey is similar to academic assessments, and that it helps staff to learn more about students' well-being, to identify which students may need extra support. It's a reliable annual diagnostic assessment, which highlights and gives insight to specific areas of need for school-wide and individual support. Next up, we're going to dig into some of our results, which are really interesting.
So we start off, we look at our secondary data in grades seven through twelve, and you can notice the blue bar at the top, and that is the supportive relationships, and that was our highest percent favorable topic at seventy-eight percent. And compared to at 78%. And compared to others nationally, we were in the 20th to 39th percentile. You can see the red dot on the right. And so we put these percentiles into perspective. This is among about 5 million students nationwide from about 7,000 schools. So keep in mind that our Panorama data was only captured during the pandemic. And is, it's in comparison to the school data received during the pandemic and during non-pandemic years for other schools. So on the right-hand column, we start to see that secondary students were low in supportive relationships, classroom effort, positive feelings, and self-efficacy, all areas represented by these red dots. But the bright side, look at the green dot. We have challenging feelings was the topic where our district had the highest percentile ranking compared to other schools nationally. You can see on the right showing we are the 40th to 59th percentile. And this means that students did not have high amounts of challenging feelings, which is a good thing. The results for 4th through 6th grade indicate a similar high percent positive score in supportive relationships. So remember, secondary with 78% and elementary here is 86. The elementary students' grades 4 through 6 also self-reported lower levels of classroom effort, positive feelings, and self-efficacy. You can see those topics on the left. We see the red dots on the right-hand side for those. Indicated by the green dots, we see that students are experiencing low levels of challenging feelings and high levels of supportive relationships when compared to other schools nationally. Both are good signs. In grades K through 3, remember the teachers completed what's called the Teacher Perception Survey of about 10 questions per student related to social-emotional learning areas. These are mainly areas observable by the teacher. And here at the top, you can see our highest percent favorable topic was emotional regulation. And the area that the teachers perceived was the lowest for their students was that this area of challenging feelings.
You know, our students did report having good amounts of supportive relationships, and this result is in line with our ongoing efforts to focus on relationships. Even though supportive relationships are a relative strength, we can see that compared to schools nationally, our secondary students fall with somewhere within the mid-30th percentile. Given the importance of supportive relationships for students, we will continue to focus on ways that we can improve this data point. And we're able to dig a little deeper into the information. Supportive relationships and student connection, we can see go hand-in-hand. The Panorama Screener shows us that that we can see at the student level what's going on with individual groups or individual students to come up with actionable responses to specific issues. In this slide from one of our sites, we can see that 16 students show up with the lowest amount of student, oops, student connection. And there are these students here that are blocked out on the bottom right-hand corner, and we can filter out students who responses in order to actually drill down into individual groups. And we can create groups of students who need more connections, and then we could staff that. We could have staff working with those particular students. And that would be, also, we can compare different groups at different schools. And this would help us with resource allocation, determining where we need to focus, what types of programs. The Panorama Survey also creates a sub-score for challenging feelings to assess how frequently students have feelings that are challenging or overwhelming. Survey results indicate that our students are not experiencing overwhelmingly negative feelings. Of note, though, is the drop for our youngest students in grades K3. This would seem to indicate that our younger students are experiencing higher levels of emotional distress, but we can look a little closer at the actual responses, and we can see that the most common response, and remember, this is teacher survey, to what, the most common response to the question, "To what extent do you feel students' life outside of school may make it difficult for them to focus on their learning at school?" is unknown. So this is a data point that is concerning, because we want our teachers to know whether or not what's going on outside of school is affecting learning. And this would be a finding that we could target. We can help teachers understand what's going on outside of school and affecting learning. And we can actually track this over time to see that we want more of our teachers not answering unknown. So it's, in a way, it teaches us some information about our students, but it's also giving us actionable information about the way our teachers respond to the questions. Another area of concern is student self-efficacy, which measures how much students believe they can succeed academically. And of all the ones we surveyed, it's the highest correlated with academic outcomes. Unfortunately, our students in grades 7 to 12 are reporting the lowest scores in self-efficacy. Given that we just are doing this during the pandemic, we don't know what our history would have looked like, but we know it is of concern. And so we want to use this data as a rationale to focus on student self-efficacy as a baseline to track some interventions that we come up with at individual sites. Digging deeper into the topic of self-efficacy, we can look at subgroups, and we can see that system-wide, female students are responding less favorably than the males. We can also see that self-efficacy focuses on how much students believe they can succeed in academic outcomes. And we may want to identify which students are elevating this need and offer targeted support. So we look at students in 10th and 11th grade. They're actually driving some of the lower scores in self-efficacy. Going further, we can look at other subgroups in self-efficacy. And we can see that Latinx students reported a full 10% less in their scores about self-efficacy. This is important data to continue to track in order to improve our efforts towards reducing academic disparities.
This survey improves our ability to access and hear or view student voice. This word cloud represents responses from 8,206 students in grades 4 through 12 to the question here. Thinking about everything in your life right now, what feels the hardest for you? Panorama also shows word clouds for what makes you feel the happiest and what can teachers or other adults at school do to better help you. So we know that the bigger the font size, the more often that was a word written by students. Here, students share that schoolwork was the most common word that they said felt difficult for them. What's neat is that each school can pull up their own image of this, of a word cloud for each of those three questions to get a quick sense to share with stakeholders, from staff, parents, and even to students. Here are Panorama's helpful sorting and reporting features related to this same area, the Student Free Response Section, related to the word cloud. This one is from "What can teachers or other adults at school do to better support you?" And we saw here individual responses in the raw data. We know that they're confidential. They don't show student names to school data viewers. I can just say, these are priceless, raw, and honest quotes from kids, and this is what's real for our kids. It is really powerful information. And we have a lot to be proud of. Here, you can see the view of our list of available Tier 1 social-emotional learning curriculum, such as toolbox tools, komochis, why try? I know these are some funny words that you've never heard, maybe, but normal ones like restorative practices. This year, new, we have Wayfinder in grades, you can see, 6 through 12. The Panorama Playbook resources are also new, and they're available to the Tier 2 teams. And where did I go? And they can share that information with Tier 1 teams. Additionally, in response to the results, the site Tier 2 teams, they plan interventions, which could include mental health support, even at the Tier 3 level with Eric's folks and clinical the mental health providers. Some of this work on SEL started back in 2014 with BEST Plus School Climate Transformation Grant. And it's really exciting to see in these Tier 1 and Tier 2 teams at all of these sites, it's been going on for about seven years. We continue with district-level meetings with these site leaders. The Panorama Education app offers a feature called the Playbook, which is a one-stop shop for a wide variety of activities, and actually even articles and strategies for responding to the findings from the Panorama surveys. Tier 2 teams can share results and the resources with their staff members and the Tier 1 team. Additionally, the Wayfinder Project SEL Program for grades 6 to 12 offers an extensive and searchable activity library, which we've been testing out at many principal meetings and other meetings around the district. These two products, you have Panorama and Wayfinder, are very complementary. So with Panorama, the survey shows the needs, and then we can respond using Wayfinder activities in addition to the Panorama Playbook. So Tier 2 teams and the site leadership teams, they use this data, and they make a site plan. And technical support meetings for these Tier 2 teams, they were held in December, and they continue in January with the support of the district survey coordinators, Eric and Kesa. And teams and administrators will also be able to rely on the Panorama data to identify needs and to justify plans for more or different social-emotional learning actions within their SIPSAs. And in our upcoming PE Day tomorrow, on the 27th, we have four different sessions on different Wayfinder project sessions, as well as Panorama. And that's for the 6th through 12th grade for Wayfinder and for counselors and Tier 2 team members for Panorama. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow morning.
In the same way that student social-emotional learning is a precursor to learning, as we mentioned at the beginning, staff social-emotional wellness is a precursor to student social-emotional learning. We always say that a dysregulated adult cannot help a dysregulated child regulate their emotions. And why, and that is why we need to start with staff wellness and improve our efforts at meeting staff needs. We have started some initiatives to support staff, and we've done trauma-informed teacher consultations, trauma-informed staff resiliency training, we've provided resilience in school environments training and support to about half of our sites. We also have the ability to implement a staff social-emotional screener through Panorama, very much like the one that we've done for students. And that would allow us to specifically address areas of concern, utilizing data to help guide our interventions. And we hope to, you know, engage in conversations to make that more possible. Takeaways. We are strong in supportive relationships and should support students with increasing self-efficacy. We are on the cusp after this, or as we wrap up the back of this pandemic or dealing with the effects of the pandemic, everyone is aware of the fact that we need to shift our focus and increase social-emotional learning. For the first time, we've started assessing social-emotional learning and wellness. Peter Drucker is credited with the notion that if you can't measure it, you can't change it. It's our high hope that through the combination of data from Youth Truth and Panorama, we can continue to expand and improve SEL and wellness throughout our sites. Our efforts have shown our relatively strong relationships are a great place to start, but that we do need to focus on improving self-efficacy. There are things we can do to help our students feel safe and connected, and we certainly should. It is our hope that focusing on students' social-emotional needs will help all of our students feel safe and connected. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love that we're using data to drive our interventions. Really important that we're moving in this direction. I am going to ask the board, do we have questions, clarification questions? Looks like Trustee Manieri has her hand raised.
Thank you for the presentation. I am very familiar with the Youth Truth data and use it a lot with the programs that I run at our organization. And a lot of what you shared is in alignment with what we're seeing in Youth Truth data. And so I just, I really want to echo President Sheffield's comment about how important this is for us to have our own data and to be able to make data-driven decisions. So I really appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. My first question is around how we are evaluating the effectiveness and the use of the social, I mean, the the SEL tools. You mentioned Wayfinder and Panorama and the, I love the komochis. But how are we evaluating whether or not they're being used and if they're actually effective with our youth, with our students?
I'm going to jump in there, Kesa.
Either way, I mean, it is a tricky piece that we know we train, we offer these, you know, resources. We make sure that every site has them. We do what we call high support, but we need to start adding in the high accountability. The, we have more, you know, sharing during meetings of counselors, like, hey, are you using the toolbox? Tell us what it looks like at your site. Tell us what your komochis rollout is like at your site for Tier 2. And so it's not, you know, it's hard to see like how worn down are these komochis dolls to know how much they're using them, you know, especially at times when kids aren't touching the doll. So it's, it is interesting, and we are examining that. One way that we can tell if they are using them or if we need more are different ways by using the Panorama data that we can lean on what sort of toolbox tools would help have changed the results in the Panorama screener.
Yeah, that's, the screener, the screener is exactly the answer to that, is that we believe that we're going to start seeing data about students, you know, how they're feeling. And that's the way, in the same way that we use a mathematics survey or a screener to determine the effectiveness of our mathematics curriculum, we want to use this as a way to determine the effectiveness of our social-emotional learning curriculum.
Got it. That makes sense. So in essence, the Panorama is the tool to evaluate. And so I'm wondering then, in Panorama, if there's a way to, I don't know how feasible this is, but if there's a way to ask about, you know, did you use this particular practice, or did you, you know what I mean, like individually, how are we looking at the tools that our staff or our teachers are utilizing? It's kind, it's kind of just like a, like a, for me, I think I would want to know in the, in the future, like what are the programs that we want to support and that we want to keep utilizing and where are there opportunities to maybe change some of these things? So I'm wondering how Panorama might get like a little bit more specific.
I can respond that, I know we requested to the Wayfinder folks, is there a way to see how many times our employees access the activity library? Or how often have they used the waypoint? So there are some of those pieces that are electronic, and so there's a way to track. I don't think they have it yet ironed out how we can see, but if we have things like, I don't know, maybe Mr. Edson on Class Link? If we have these apps access through that, if there's a way to see how often those online tools are used. But I do think there's an accountability piece that can be improved, and I'm looking forward to using that too, and really reflecting back to the data from the screener. Thank you.
Awesome. And then my, my second question and my last question is also for, I really appreciate the focus on staff wellness, and I'm so glad that that was a part of the presentation and part of the, the work. So how were we also kind of assessing the usage of services? Are our staff utilizing these free sessions with SOS? Any of the other services that the district offer? Are we gathering data from them about whether or not this is working for them, or if they need something else? Just kind of wondering about staff evaluation for these services.
I really want to actually put a plug out to all the staff who can hear my voice right now and who are struggling, that SOS Community Counseling does have availability right now. They had a hard-to-explain drop-off in their referrals, and so we have started trying to publicize that a little bit, but we'll be doing more of that. I found out a couple of weeks ago that they had openings and that there weren't very many of our staff utilizing their resources. So I think that's part of just a little bit of overwhelm, is sometimes I imagine our staff are even so overwhelmed that it's hard for them to even get their own mental health needs met. And, you know, I know that people are really having a hard time. That resource is available, SOS Community Counseling, there is a flyer on our website. I think it's in the staff resources section.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to also elevate that. I work with SOS, they're a great organization, if anyone. I can definitely vouch for how awesome their services are. Thank you for, for the presentation.
Thank you, Trustee Manieri. Trustee Flores.
Thank you. My question's just went blank. Anyway, so I just want to say thank you for this very thorough, thorough research or presentation that you did. I particularly liked the, you know, the little analysis, the deep sort of analysis that you put in there. Thank you for doing that. So I'm wondering, in terms of comparative county data, you know, I saw that you had national, internationally comparative data. Do we have any data that we could compare with the county? And if not, you know, will that be something that we can do in the, in the future? Surveys?
Because I did reach out to our allies at SCO, and I, we thought about this question. Heard that it might be coming, and I think when I reached out, she reached out to some other county districts, and there are. Heard that it might be coming and I think, uh, when I reached out, she reached out to some other county districts and there are not other school districts using panorama. And so maybe because we're the biggest district and a presentation like this, uh, we did share at the SEL. There's like a monthly meeting collaborative, Eric, I think I've been to some of the meetings, Eric presented that we had panorama this last time. And so we're hopeful that other districts get excited about it as well, but I think the way to compare. Our districts are really through the youth truth survey, which is more of a county wide, but nationwide, I know it's, you know, different. We've had some different things happen here in Sonoma County.
Right, right. Well, thank you. And then, um, lastly, I, I did notice that you had a couple of updated slides. It'll be nice to, um, note that when, when you're presenting. Cause you have some new data like slide number twenty one was a little bit updated from the one that I have the on the agenda here. Just, you know, um, minutia here, but it's, it's kinda nice to see the new updates. Right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Flores, trustee Fong.
Thank you, President Ed, and thank you, Kesa and Eric. Really great presentation. I love this program. I love youth truth. I love getting the data. Thank you. We are really in the right direction. We need this quantitative stuff and, uh. How many kids finished it and parent, I mean, uh, teachers too is amazing. That's, that's a really good return rate. Congratulations to everybody, to the whole district. Okay, here's the question. Um, when you don't, when you're diving down a little bit into the, into the various groups. Was there a way to dive down into specialized kids and LGBTQ kids?
Yes, absolutely. Um, well, not, not the LGBTQ kids. Those are, they have to be students that are identified as a subgroup. Within our student information system and we don't currently track them as a subgroup. We, yeah, and, and there isn't a question asking about that that would allow us to create a subgroup with them. So, and, and creating our own group of those students can, can, you know, has been challenging. So I, it is important to, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna add that there, there is a way to create special interest groups so that those students can be tracked over time. Like it even drills down for grade levels or by counselor. Um, and so if there are some identifying factors that we wanna track over time, um, it's a matter of manually putting them in a group.
Right, and we can create our own groups and we're actually creating groups, intervention groups, like students that are participating in school based therapy. We'll be able to look at them against students who aren't participating in school based therapy. As an evaluation tool for our, for our effective, for our programs.
And then can you talk a little bit about special ed?
And early on we used, surprisingly easy to sort different subgroups and, and demographic groups. That I was, the reason I really liked panorama is because of the ease. And so before creating this presentation, we went through or I was, you know, digging through some data to see like what were the. Was there anything that was outstanding or concerning? And so we have some early data on that. And that we tried to like pull out something that would make the most sense. It wouldn't be a two hour presentation.
Yeah, I mean, we could really dig into the weeds with this and, and, I mean, we, we debated as to whether or not I should like reshare the screen right now. To go into what we can see with your particular responses. If anybody would like to reach out to me individually to sort of kick the tires on the level of data and the utility that we have. We're really providing an unprecedented amount of data to our site based teams in order to look at, um, what their efforts are. And I'd be happy to share that with anyone here.
Thank you both. Those are my questions. I have some comments which I will share later. President Ed.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Um, let's see, trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much. This, this report is full of a lot of love and that, that really shines through. So I'm grateful for that. I had a couple of questions around. And I'm realizing I'm speaking from a generation that like embraces challenging feelings and. You know, what it means to turn the curve from like being emotionally unregulated and to deal with challenging feelings. And so I actually, I had some concern about those numbers being so high. And I wonder if there's a way to say like, are kids emotionally regulating or are they checked out and not feeling safe to share emotions? It's something that I definitely see, you know, in, in my, in my own kids. In certain moments where things are really tough and, and it's actually like my goal as a parent to help them be able to figure out how to express some of those things. Rather than to check out. And I know that's contrary to what a lot of classroom teachers need in that moment is. You know, like they, they, they appreciate the emotional regulation, but it just like, how, how are we understanding the distinction between? Being emotionally regulated and then not feeling safe enough to actually share a challenging emotion. So the absence of challenging emotions for me, and again, maybe this is just my generation. I was kind of like, I kinda, I kinda wanna see how are we as an institution, you know? Creating those moments of challenge and growth and, and being a place that can hold that space for kids and staff. And teachers, um, in that moment to help turn that, turn that moment.
Yeah, I mean, that was a really challenging data point for me as well, because I've got staff and all the sites who are like, oh my gosh, Eric. These kids are overwhelmed with intense emotional, like with emotional challenges and problems. And what I, and I looked deeper into it and I think what we're seeing is that. There's this phenomenon occurring with students where it's, it's more appropriate to call it languishing than it is overwhelming emotional intensity. They're not having great feelings because we measured that unfortunately, and they're not having really terrible feelings either. And so your comments, I think, are right along line of what's really, what we're really detecting here. Is this sort of idea of just kids are just kinda not doing very well and, and, and languishing in a way that is, is not. Characteristic of major, major problems, but it's also seems to be lacking some major, major successes. And, and I, I kinda kicked that around with some of my team and, and that, that resonated for them and I, I hope that resonates for you as well.
Yeah, it, it definitely does. Thank you so much. I, I, I knew that that thoughtfulness would be in, in the way that your team is engaging with this data. I had another question around. Self advocacy and I, I really appreciated that kind of pullout and that, you know, the, the deep dive that you showed is possible with this program. And looking at, you know, the difference between, um, female students and male students in this, in this category as well as. You know, the difference in, in different race ethnicities. One of the things that, again, comes from my experience as a parent in the district and watching my kids go through situations, you know? And, and I think turning the curve from a deficit frame and saying like, these kids feel like they're not able to succeed. Into recognizing, we actually have a number of folks in our district who are telling kids fifty percent of you will fail. Right? That is what the expectation is. That's what happened last year. Get ready for it, work hard. And so. I just like, how much are we grounding the understanding of children and, and students? Moments of feeling like they actually have the support from the outset rather than being, starting off the year, being told that they're gonna fail. And so like, how are we using some of this data to also push into PD? To recognize that, you know, starting off that frame may not necessarily, I mean, it's totally motivating for me as, as a student, right? But again, wrong generation. We've learned that that's not necessarily the way to motivate children anymore. So like, how, how are we helping to push in these responses from kids? You know, from less about targeted support to kids who are feeling like they're not gonna succeed into saying, hey, teachers, like let's create a. An environment and a culture that assumes that children will succeed. And that that's the targeted support that needs to happen inside of a classroom rather than a deficit approach dealing with kids. Who are being challenged at succeeding because they've already been told that they're gonna fail.
I, sometimes it's hard to remember that I'm just one person and I see so much going on. The first step is to provide the data. And now we can see which students have that sense of self efficacy and we can see where they're clustering. We can see which classrooms happen to have the highest amount of student self efficacy. And, and now what we end up doing with that, I mean, I, I hope we get to come back. I'd love to come back and report what the individual teams had done and I'd love to be given the opportunity to collect this data again. Over time to show the effectiveness of those interventions where they've happened. I don't wanna presume as a mental health expert to be an educational expert. And so we're gonna be empowering the educational experts at each site to make just those decisions. And we don't wanna come here and say to everybody en masse, hey, everyone, this is what you should be doing. We're saying, here's data. Now figure out what you should be doing because you're the experts. And, and we'll be here to support you because I can't just tier three our way out of this emotional mental health crisis. We need support in the classrooms, doing these things like focusing on self efficacy. If everyone in a kid's life is focusing on helping them have more efficacy in math and English and all their other classes. They're actually gonna have more efficacy in their emotional lives as well.
Dr. Long, thank you much again for just that, that rich, rich response. I'm so, I'm so grateful that you're in this work.
Sorry, uh, I can just add on that, uh, when we got the results from the panorama survey. Uh, we downloaded the PDF and I shared it with, uh, wayfinder, our contact there, Katie Barr. And I said, hey, what, you know, what can you do? We need your help. You wanna, you know, how can we really have these two products linked together? And so within a couple of weeks, we had a slide deck that was really focused on the self efficacy and I think challenging feelings. And so she took the two areas that were our district, you know, the, the parts were a little lower. And then made a, the slide deck for, I think, the five different activities from wayfinder for each of those focus areas. And so we share that right away with principals so that, you know, we want the principals to model those activities with their staff members during a staff meeting. And then hopefully the teachers say, wow, that was really kind of fun. I didn't mind that at all. Maybe I'll try that with my fifth period class. We're hopeful that that trickle down happens with modeling. So, and, and even teams can find their own solutions. Like Eric said, that maybe are different than those slides that a wayfinder had and also in the panorama playbook, there are. You know, specific things that you respond to some like self efficacy, like the kids realize they can do it. And then a lot of the responses were a tier one items like study skills. Using your agenda, writing things down, having positive self talk, the growth mindset. So it's, it's really, something seemed almost too simple. It's interesting to see that there are multiple ways we can respond.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. I just, I wanted to add on to that too, because I think that there's definitely some intricacies. When looking at some of these concepts and then the, sometimes the tendency to do like an apply all. And so when I opened up talking about educational justice and this work that we're doing around social emotional learning. It's important to note that, um, another part of our, our work and our job is to make sure that we constantly crosswalk this with. Different concepts that, that we like to bring to the forefront. So for instance, you know, some of those things around self awareness. And are we also, um, crosswalking it with racial identity and that critical self reflection or the changing of the narratives? So that we're not looking at this, you know, one size fits all. Um, and that this word is now applied to the students, so they must be that. Um, and so I'm, I'm pretty confident in the team's ability to continue to drill down and make it personal. And about each and every student.
Thank you so much, Dr. Armstrong, and, and thank you and your whole team for just a really beautiful approach to. To looking and see, seeing, not looking at, seeing, seeing our kids. Seeing, seeing our institution. So, so, so grateful for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz, and thank you for sharing sort of our generation's inclination of wanting kids to face. Challenging feelings and I, I, I know, um, students, my kids, they didn't have, um, any peer support. During distance learning. And now they've developed some really kind of interesting coping mechanisms. They have each other. And when you have a, a, a ten year old trying to bounce something off of, of, uh, an eight year old. It, it, you know, in a weird kind of way, it's, it's, it's really interesting to watch. It's strange to watch. And I can't imagine what's going on in the classroom. Um, I do have a question about, um, about. Access to resources and I think, um, Eric, you had mentioned the SOS link. Being, or, or maybe, maybe it was you, Kesa, um, SOS link on the website under resources. I'm, I'm just wondering if it's possible, things kind of being as they are right now and looking at some of, um, the data. In, um, in, uh, the, the findings that if, you know, we have things placed in a really accessible way. Where people can get resources, access information, um, now and of course, moving forward.
Um, I'm sorry, like the, the question is basically about, um, making the information for staff more available.
Yeah.
Yeah, and. We, we have been communicating through all of the principals and we're hoping that a principal will be a person who would know that a staff person is struggling. And kind of going through that way. I know that I have, uh, uh, conversations with staff on a pretty regular basis about. What their options are for finding relevant medical or mental health care and kinda act as a little bit of a, um, of, of. An advocate for folks to get out there into the community and get their own. We can definitely share that, that resource. Part of our concern was overwhelming it. There is no real place where there is an adequate amount of mental health care for any individuals in our system. Society world right now.
Yeah.
We're, we're dealing with unprecedented shortages of that. And, and so when I found, so to be able to come and say, oh, they have availability is like, I mean, that's one of the neatest things I've been able to say. So, um, it, it, and I'm pretty certain that as folks, you know, sign up for that, they'll be once again struggling.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, you know, I had brought up, you know, what? The pandemic has done to my kids as kind of, I just, you know, and it's, it's doing things differently for adults who can, you know, obviously express themselves. And, and, and maybe their own personal needs better. But, you know, we've had so much isolation and just, you know, imagine what people are, are dealing with on a day to day basis. And, you know, I'm just, I guess my, my wonder is, you know, anything that we can do. We have resources, we have, um, um, access, making it, you know, that much more easy to obtain.
Right, well, just like, just like we can't solve our problems with our student mental health needs with only with one on one tier three services. We aren't gonna be able to support our staff needs with these mental health resources. We need to, whenever possible, come up with practices that are supportive of them. We need to support their ability to work together as groups and to support each other. There was a comment earlier about how overwhelming self care can be for folks. We've stopped saying self care. We say communities of care now. And we wanna support staff coming together to support each other and to think about ways that they can, can go beyond this idea of self care. To more of caring for each other. And so in what ways can we as a system support the staff? And what ways as we, as you, as a board and me as an employee, how can I help each other, um, the rest of the people? That's way more possible, powerful than how do we find more mental health clinicians for our staff who are suffering? Let's prevent them from suffering in the first place.
That is amazing. I love that. I love that we're even able to express that. Um, trustee Manieri.
Yeah, I just had one more question. Um, this conversation around, you know, what do we do with the data? How do we, how do we move forward? I, it, it reminded me of, um, a meeting I was in recently. Have you, um, Eric and Kesa and Dr. Armstrong? Heard of the, the youth truth cohort, um, the pairing of the community based organizations with, uh, school district and school sites to kind of. Think about bold ways that, uh, we can do exactly what, um, Eric just mentioned, um, kind of create these communities of care. I'm just wondering if you know about that and if, and if you have any plans to be a part of that.
Hook us up.
Yeah, yes, I, I do know about that and we are part of the collaborative and I know the next step. After the collection of data is to be in community with others around processing of the data. So, so yes, we're included in that. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I'm happy to support however I can. Um, it sounds like a really cool project and to do exactly what is being talked about right now. Find really creative ways, um, because you're right, mental health care is, uh, really difficult to find in this county. And it's not enough to just say, we're gonna hook you up with a counselor or a therapist. So I really appreciate all of the thoughtfulness that, that you're putting into this work.
All right, um, other questions from board members? Seeing none. Um, this is a discussion item. Let's move it to public comment. See if we have folks in the school community. Who want to comment on this agenda item.
If there are members of the public would like to comment on item E two, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. All right, moving it back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion? No motion, sorry. This is a discussion. Okay, so further discussion. Okay, so further discussion, we have trustee Fong and then trustee McCormick.
So there's always a knowing doing gap. And so Casey, you were talking about how you were going to be making sure that we're monitoring how what's getting used. And I think there's a lot of actions that you guys have put together that really is something or are things that teachers can use without a lot more effort that it becomes part of the culture. So applause for that. But here's the thing, as we are keeping, as the board is keeping our eye on the LCAP and our funding and continually putting out dollars for programs. I'm going to ask you for some reports back. How are we doing? How is this program doing? How is Wayfinder doing? How are komochis, which I don't know what they are, but they sound very cute? So I want, we want those reports back. What's efficacious and what's not, and we need to drop what's not because we got to watch our bottom line. So that kind of data coming back to us is something that we would really like back. And I don't know if it's, you know, what's what's a good timeframe for you guys? You guys can tell us. Superintendent and Dr. Armstrong, you can tell us that we need that data back. How's it going? All right.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Trustee McCormick.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation and the data collection. And it's really, really interesting and eye opening and exciting on some fronts and disturbing on others. And obviously, there's more work that we need to do. My comment, just, you know, in line with what Director Fong just said. I am particularly interested in finding out kind of what the next cycle is and assessing how we're doing regarding specifically self efficacy. And how their our students are feeling about that. And maybe even perhaps a similar survey with staff and faculty would be fantastic. Because I know having a high sense of self efficacy is like a can be like practically a number one predictor for success. And also having a low sense of self efficacy can be a predictor of not success or not having success. And I was intrigued by the breakdown of the groups on that. I want to hear more on that, but I'm just kind of wondering. Or I'm just looking forward to the next cycle of getting that data is particularly on that thing, that item being assessed, because I think that's really big. And I know it's a really big, hard thing to kind of really put your finger on of like, why? Why does one person have a stronger sense of self efficacy than another? And kind of digging deep into that and then working on, I mean, you already shared a few things about things that help build a sense of self confidence and self efficacy. But I think that's a very powerful assessment tool that we need to continue to work on. But I would also be really interested on assessing, you know, having staff and faculty an opportunity to share how they're feeling with self efficacy as well. Currently in in line with how things are going right now in this world of COVID that we're in, which is just colors and shapes everything day to day that we are dealing with, but also just in the future. I think it's a powerful tool. So but thank you for the entire thing is really interesting and well thought out and put to put together and presented. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McCormick. Other board members? All right, seeing none. I just want to say again, thank you, Kesa. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Dr. Armstrong, for presenting us with this really important data and this really important discussion. We have identified some areas that we really need to focus to. Want to thank you so much for bringing this to us.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, moving on, we are moving on to agenda item E three. This is a public hearing. The impact of 2020 census data on trustee area map, population balance and proposed adjusted maps. The board will conduct a public hearing to receive information regarding the assessment of the trustee area area map as required by education code with the release of new 2020 California census data. And so this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up. Rick, I see your you have, I'm sorry.
Actually, President Sheffield, what we would like to do is bring Milton Foster over.
Oh, perfect.
Have a presentation and then open the public hearing on this. The next, the next either or the next and future items will be done the way that you're doing this one.
Thank you for for the the correction. We have Milton. Hello, Milton. How are you?
All right. How's it going?
Nice to see you. Welcome, welcome. We're going to turn it over to you then. You have some presentation to share with us.
Yes. All right. So I have a presentation that I'm going to share my screen. Hold on just a second. All right. Can everyone see?
Yes, you're good.
They can.
Okay, so I'll just begin briefly. We had a dinner presentation, I want to say last month over the district's transition to buy trustee areas. And as a requirement, the district has to has to every 10 years after federal census, do an analysis of its existing trustee area for the purposes of assessing its present map. And what that looks like is the demographer takes a look at the map and determines whether or not the district is still in compliance. This is part of the rules of the Education Code fifty nineteen point five. And this process, this analysis process must be conducted and then completed on or before March first of twenty twenty two of this year. What this assessment looks like is a demographer takes the twenty twenty census data and overlays it onto the existing trustee area map and determines if the population is still in compliance. He did that in this case, and he determined that the district was out of compliance, the map. Out of compliance means that the population between the largest and the smallest trustee area, the variance is greater than 10%. And that number looks like as follows. So here is a a readout, a table of the information. If you see right in the middle of the page, it says total variance twenty two point four percent. That is the variance based upon the twenty twenty census data. If you look at the table down in the southern portion, you see there the twenty ten census and compared to the twenty twenty census there. If you look, you will see that the trustee area, there was been growth in the district of about twenty eight hundred people or so. But trustee area three decreased comparatively in population. So the growth was not equal across the district. You can see in the variances there that trustee area two expanded a little more than average. Trustee area three decreased significantly more. Trustee areas four and six expanded while trustee area seven decreased. So it's just, you know, this is part of the data that we got. So now the process is to move forward and to adjust the maps. The board is required to adjust the maps now. So if you look at let's see, this is the current trustee areas. So what we have the demographer do is adjust the maps to allow for to bring the population back into compliance. So let's take a look at that. So this is the present area here, the present trustee areas. If you look at the top corner, you'll see the total variance twenty two point four percent. That's out of compliance. You see a breakdown of this table broken down by ethnicity based upon the twenty twenty census numbers. So here is the first crack at it by the demographer. Again, the goal here, since the district already went through the process of going to buy trustee areas, was really to maintain to the integrity of the original map to the extent possible. Because the district already went through a very extensive process. They already had public and community feedback. And so ultimately, that was what the demographer attempted to do was to use the existing trustee areas and then make changes to the or adjust the boundaries to bring that population back into compliance. So as you look at this scenario one right here, you'll see that the purple line reflects the original trustee areas. So when you see the purple lines there and it's so if you see the the color areas, compare that to the the purple, the purple line, you'll see that for the most part, the areas largely are the same as what they were before. There's some minor adjustments which we'll kind of go through when we go through the different scenarios that the demographer did in order to bring the population back into compliance. So this is trustee, this is scenario one here. You see, there's very little difference between this and the underlying map. And you'll notice there's not much difference between all of the maps, but I'll compare them to you for the for you as we go through. So this is a close up here. You'll see the school, the the school attendance areas or the school locations, school site locations. You will see, you will notice that none of those school site locations have changed with the new map. They're all still in the existing trustee areas. There may be, there may be ones or two that's right on the border. I think just one, the one that's dead center might have shifted from the red area to the yellow area. But for the most part, all the trustee, the school sites have stayed in their existing trustee areas. Okay, if you, that scenario one, if you look at the top right corner, with those adjustments, brought the variance down from the twenty two plus percent down to six point one percent, which is what we need beneath beneath 10%. So if you see here largely, you know, the population balances are appropriate across the board. The Hispanic Latino community CVAP is, you know, within a percentage or two of what they those numbers were in the existing map. So there there hasn't been any decrease significantly. And in fact, in some areas, there was, at least in one area, there was an increase across the areas. So that was scenario one. Scenario two here, you know, without having them side by side, they look very similar, but I'll tell you the distinction. If you looked right in the dead center of the map, right between the blue area and the yellow area, you see there just above the purple outline there. There's a portion of the blue that's that is sticking up above the purple outline, dead center of the map. That is a distinction between the first scenario and this second scenario. Again, the demographer made minor changes because again, he's trying to maintain to the extent that he can, the original integrity of the underlying map. The other piece that changed on this map as far as giving it a different look as compared to scenario one is down at the very bottom of the page in the purple area. There's almost like a rabbit's foot at the very bottom. If you compare that to this scenario two and scenario one, that that rabbit foot, if you will, was blue and it was in the blue area, which is trustee area four. In this instance, it's in the purple area, which is trustee area five. And there's also, let's see, go back to the original scenario one. You'll see there, if you look down in the between the purple and the blue area as well, there's also a little small blue area in trustee scenario one that's sticking beneath the purple line. If you look that down, the southwest portion of the map at the very bottom. And if you go to scenario two, you'll see that little outside area that's outside of the purple is now gone if you look at scenario two. So that's been absorbed by by the the purple area. So small, again, small distinctions. If you look at the, this is a close up. Just kind of demonstrating the the areas that have shifted or the distinctions you see again, it's not very much different than the existing map. This variance here is six point four. So the first one was, I believe, was six point one. First scenario one was six point one, second scenario, six point four. Again, the the CVAP as broken down by the ethnicities are largely consistent amongst the three different scenarios that were prepared by the demographer. Okay, so here is a scenario three. Again, there's very small differences between this one and scenario two, one of them being the main one being, if you look dead center of the map, trustee area one, the yellow area just beneath where it says West Third Street, there's almost a kind of a Tetris looking block there that's sticking out from the yellow area to the the orange area, which is trustee area six. That does not exist in scenario one. So that was the 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 main change that was made here as compared to scenario one. Again, going back between the blue and the purple areas, these areas are more consistent with the way scenario one was as compared to scenario two. The rabbit's foot there is in the blue and then the you have the small sort of triangular piece that extends beneath the purple line, similar to area one. So again, the scenarios, these are the three different scenarios we have. If we look at the CVAP, I'm sorry, the variance here for scenario three, it's five point five. So they're all roughly, you know, within a half a percent of each other. You know, again, the numbers across the board are, you know, there's largely any difference at all. And again, the purpose of this was the demographer to kind of give three different looks, but that largely kept consistent the original map that exists right now in the district. So those are, that's a look at our three different trustee scenarios. And, you know, just for sake of next steps, here, you know, we we posted this on the district website. After I get done with presentation and know you're going to invite public community feedback. And then the next steps would be at the February ninth or February twenty third meeting, depending on the board's pleasure. There would be another public hearing. And then at one of those, at either the February ninth or February twenty third meeting, the board would then need to select a map from whichever options are available at that time. And so with that, I will take questions and provide responses to any questions that the board might have. And I'll keep the presentation up in case the board might want to take a look at any specific maps.
Thank you, Milton. Questions from the board? You guys might have to shout it out because I, we're going to leave the presentation open. I'll look for your hands, but if you have questions.
I have a quick question. Looking at this maps, oh, sorry, Stephanie, were you, did you raise your hand first?
Keep going, trustee Flores.
Is there a reason why we didn't look at like natural, not natural, but artificial sort of borders like Highway one oh one, Highway twelve? Instead of doing like a, you know, an indentation here and there. So because you see that, you know, is that Highway one oh one in green? Yes.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it was there a reason why? Was it the the variance? Was it too big?
Yes, the populations were too large to wholly contain a specific trustee area. For example, on the east and then or on the the west side of the one oh one. And so we had to go across those areas in order to maintain population variance. And this was a similar discussion that was had at the time that the original maps were created as well. There's just a significant amount of population there that needs so that we have to kind of go across at least in those areas that we do across the one oh one. We attempted to respect the natural boundaries as much as we can. But again, the primary responsibility here is you have to balance the population. And then also what we're attempting to do is respect the communities of interest by way of expect. the communities of interest by way of expect uh respecting the original underlying and undertaking of the original map. Uh so that's the reason why we, you know, although we we could have did different configurations, we tried to largely stay within the same footprints. Uh in addition, you know, population wise, the district didn't grow very much overall total population. There was just some disproportionate uh areas. But you know, be because the demographer creates these maps by census blocks, he can resolve the uh differences in population without significant movement in the lines by choosing certain selected locations that are, that have a significant population and shifting or moving those around. And so, you know, the goal being to maintain largely, you know, ninety percent of, if we can, of the existing lines.
Got it, got it. Um is there any way that we can get fees? Uh th- these are really hard to look at, right? And I was trying to zoom in. Um uh what, in these presentations, i- is there a way to get like a live map like the one we have online? So we can actually see, uh is that too much to ask?
No, actually, uh and uh uh I sent to uh to uh Deputy Soup today, Rick, to uh uh what I got from demographer uh an overlay of each of the trustee area maps or the scenarios. Uh and they use Google Maps so that you can actually go through, if you go onto the district's website and zoom in to get a closer look uh uh at the, at the street level. And you can zoom in just like Google Maps and see exactly where the lines are. We tried to put the major roads, but like you said, it's difficult when you're sort of snipping PDFs and trying to uh put it into a certain spot, but we do have the capability, if anyone wants to go onto the district website to zoom in uh to get more detailed feedback and then uh any other revisions or changes, we can certainly respond to.
Okay.
Can we see that the census tracks actually up close? Are we able to do that? Um I I but not on the Google, but are we able to?
To to see the census tracks?
Yeah, so you're talking about being able to shift larger populations, a really easy tool um ability that the demographer has.
Yes.
Um but we're not, I mean, definitely not on on here, we we don't have that fine detail on that.
No, we don't have, we don't uh, the demographer would have to, they use their software, of course, everything to use it. And when they pull it up, they, you know, it's broken down by census blocks, which, as you might imagine, are really numerous. And so they have to deactivate those for purposes of getting a map that doesn't look, you know, confusing and doesn't have, you know, thousand of little small.
Very familiar with uh census tracks and use of these tools. Um.
Yeah.
Uh trustee Flores, did you have more questions?
Uh this is maybe for Anna. I mean, where is it on our district website? Because I I I can see our current one, but I don't see the uh overlay of the uh the proposal or the proposed new um maps.
Yeah, I'll actually uh invite Deputy um Superintendent Edson to describe where they are.
Uh sure, thank you. Uh good evening, everybody. Uh under the Board of Education, uh excuse me, it says trustee area information. If you click on that, uh there was a new section added today. Uh and at the bottom of that page now says link to maps. It's going to pull up a very similar map to what is uh above under trustee area maps, where you're actually able to see the existing uh existing areas and then overlay scenario one, two, and three respectively.
Yeah, it's actually, I, great, thank you.
And and that will also be featured on our homepage tomorrow. So it'll be easier access to that.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Manieri.
Thank you. Um yeah, one of my questions was exactly what Director Flores um just asked for, if there's a way to see some sort of interactive map. Um I would love to kind of dive in a little bit deeper and look at where the cha- especially where the changes are being uh proposed um to see if we're splitting up any communities of interest. That would be something that I would love to look at and be able to to provide feedback on um as best as I could. Um and then my s- my second question, um if we're looking at these changes, if we're looking at these scenarios through an equity lens, um is there a scenario, and the answer might be no, but is is this, is there any scenario um that advances our equity work in any way? I know we live in a, in a very segregated city and um there are a lot of factors outside of our control why we see segregated schools in our district, but um I'm just wondering if there is anything in the data that would show us that one scenario is more equitable than another.
Uh no, I don't believe so because, you know, this is largely based upon uh, you know, where people actually reside, where they presently reside at the moment. And so uh, you know, the purpose of CBRA, of course, is the underlying purpose is to increase the voting power of the uh historically underrepresented minority groups. And so that is why we have, if you look at, you know, the citizen voting age population, you look at the different ethnicities, there is a breakdown of the composition of the different respective ethnicities uh by each trustee area. Uh and for example, in this scenario here, which is scenario three, the Latino group is twenty-one point eight percent in trustee area one, twenty point nine two, uh fifteen point six, twenty-eight point eight, seven point three, and then thirty-two point nine in six. Uh so and then, let me see, in seven. So over just a second. In seven, there is twelve point eight. So that shows you sort of the composition and the breakdown. And what the demographer was doing was making changes uh so that we uh try and at least keep the voting power of those minority block groups the same uh, you know, understanding that some differentiation was going to happen because the primary or the main factor is the total population. That's something that kind of has to be balanced, but we do try and balance it in a way so that we we keep the existing voting power, if not try and, you know, do some measurable increase if we can. Uh but we're, we're, we're really sort of constrained in this process here by inch, making sure to balance the population underneath that ten percent. That's the main factor in order to be legally compliant.
Thank you.
Trustee Medina.
Sorry, I was trying to mute my audio. Um yeah, I was just kind of looking at 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 the same thing about the maps. So glad you answered that and provided that information. I I just want to clarify the the variance is based on total population or the voting population? It's the total, right?
Total population, yes, sir.
Okay. Um yeah, I think my my other questions have been answered since, since I raised my hand, so I think I'm good right now. But um just in terms of process, um like, next we got a uh a public hearing, one meeting, and then uh final uh vote and decision on the maps, correct?
Yes.
And then these would go into effect for like this next twenty twenty-two elections, all right?
That's correct. The whatever map is chosen by the board, we're going to affect for the twenty twenty-two election moving forward. And then, of course, you know, there would be another assessment, another analysis done by the district uh once the twenty thirty census comes out.
And 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 I don't know if you have the interest of this questions or maybe uh uh Deputy Superintendent Edson, but in terms of like timeline for future stuff, in terms of like our approval and getting stuff into, I presume, the registered voters and stuff like that, what is a timeline? When do we have to have all things done? You know, if we were to like delay the process or look for more input or something of that nature.
So the process by law has to be completed uh before March first, twenty twenty-two. That is the requirement. Uh if not, then what happens is the county committee could come in, conduct their own process, and then they basically charge the district uh for any process that they have. So the district essentially would lose control of its process if it did not complete it on or before March first. Uh everyone, of course, is really impacted. This process was really impacted by, of course, the pandemic. Uh because this uh, the data was supposed to be released uh early last year around March, and it didn't get released until basically almost October. Uh so that really impacted the timeframe uh that everyone had in order to kind of accomplish this task.
And and just one last thing, I don't know if this is something that can be added in terms of additional information. Um I just really like to like look at the numbers, but in terms of like the the specific like demographic numbers and data that the demographer is looking at per like each district, like if that can be maybe added as a supplement, I don't know if he's looking at like some spreadsheet or something of that nature that we can maybe look at. Um it's not like super central for me to look at, but but I like seeing those numbers if that's a possibility. Um I'd like to see it maybe in that section where the Google map is, maybe it's something that the public could also look at for other kind of geeky nerdy people. I like numbers like myself.
Do you, do you mean, uh trustee Medina, do you mean beyond, for example, the screen that I'm sharing right now?
Oh, yeah, I mean, per per census tract to see what are the different census tracts that are being added um that are being subtracted and kind of seeing like the individual numbers, just to kind of see what's what's happening and maybe kind of determine how these numbers are changing.
Like by census block, you mean?
Yeah, census block.
Okay, okay. I will speak with the demographer and see if we can't get the that capability to the district. And I coordinate with uh uh Mr. Edson uh to to advise him as to whether or not we can accomplish that.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Trustee David Cruz.
Thank you, Milton. This is um really beautiful work. I appreciate the clarity of this table and I think in particular, I'm looking at the difference between the total population and the citizen voting age population and recognizing that, you know, as we get, oh, sorry, my question. So the the total population versus the citizen voting age population, essentially the difference there is the total population is younger, right? It's the under eighteen who can't vote. And so if you look at this chart, like the twenty thirty redistricting is going to be super cool. Um because that's when, that's when all these kids of color, you know, become a voting age and to to Director Manieri's point earlier, like that, that may be when we have an opportunity to really look at and desegregating our schools, desegregating our districts and um and it's interesting to see the ways in which our, you know, our populations right now or our districts right now that are overwhelmingly, you know, white voting age or majority white voting age, um those shifts pretty significantly. Um when you look at the differences between the total population and the city same voting age population. Um so I really appreciate this um, the presentation and the way that you laid it out so clearly. Um the other kind of question that I had more for the district, I think, than for you, Milton, but um something for us to grapple with is looking at the kind of the changes in populations in our district. Um also understanding the impacts of the changes in our population to our schools. Are we seeing, you know, it's like I'm looking in, in particular, trustee area three, I think there was like a negative twelve point seven percent drop in population in that district. I understand largely it's, you know, the impacts of fires in my district, et cetera. A lot of people um may not have rebuilt, moved out. But do we know, do we know, and is there a way for us to kind of drill down into this data to understand where people have gone? Uh you know, if they moved into a different district, if it was just kind of folks moving around the city of Santa Rosa, if it's actually leaving the district.
Well, I, that's a question that I might uh that I'll ask the demographer. I don't know, because the census data just describes uh where people are at, right? Where they declare they reside and where they live. Uh I don't know that the the demographer gets data that indicates uh, you know, where people have moved from or where the shift is. Uh I don't know that that sort of data is provided. I will ask the demographer to see uh to what extent they get additional information beyond this this person is a resident, this is where they reside, this is their ethnicity. Uh what other information is potentially collected uh to give some indication to the board, hey, these people moved from, you know, outside the district to within the district, or these are people that, you know, trust trustee area three, lost people to trustee area five. Uh so I can certainly find out, but they might not have that level of uh specificity in the data.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. And so I I guess this is a question more to um cabinet and to our board is, do we have an additional interest in any capacity to drill down and to understand the changes within our district? Um I know we've had some really good conversations about data, you know, data rich conversations in the past, and I would just, I think in some of those places where there has been dramatic change in the population, I would love to see, you know, is that reflective in our student population and our district population as well? Um the, that's all I have. Again, thank you so much, Milton.
Okay.
Other trustees? More questions? I'm not seeing hands raised. Um I want to um just make sure Deputy Superintendent Edson that I'm doing this procedurally um correct? Am I able to open the public hearing? Is that? All right.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um so um the board will conduct a public hearing to receive information regarding the assessment of trustee area maps. I am opening the public hearing for community input. Is there um public comment, public input?
So if there are members of the public who would like to comment during this public hearing, um item E three, please raise your hand at this time. And there are no hands raised.
Great, thank you. All right, well, um the meeting is closed, a public meeting is closed. Um thank you again, Milton.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thank you, you as well.
All right.
Okay, so Superintendent Chanel, do do I bring it back and see if we we need um, you know, comments, public comment from the, from um the trustees? We've had some questions from Milton, but do we want to have further discussion as it is a technically a discussion item?
Um that is at the pleasure of the board. Um you know, you have um followed the procedure for the public hearing portion. And so this would be the opportunity for the board for any further discussion, knowing that there's no action on this item.
Great, thank you. Let's bring it back to the board and see if we do. Do we have um further discussion um from from board members? All right, seeing none. We are going to move on to agenda item E four. This is an action item, acceptance of the twenty 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 twenty-one independent audit. The board will consider acceptance of the independent audit report for the combined Santa Rosa Elementary and High School districts. Let's see, we have Deputy Superintendent Edson with us. Oh, and we're having Joel join us as well. We have Joel brought over.
Yes, please bring over Mr. Dantos and Mr. Fam, Paul Fam, please.
Thank you. I turn it over to you, Rick.
Thank you. I'll wait for Paul to join us. Just uh give it a second. There it comes. You there, Paul? Thank you. Uh good evening, uh President Sheffield, Superintendent Chanel, members of the board uh and our community members that are still with us. Uh tonight, we are presenting the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one uh audited financial report. Uh here tonight to discuss the report uh that was included in the board packet is Paul Fam from Siobhan and Associates. Uh so in the interest of time, I will turn it over to Paul to give um information on uh their firm conducting the audit, uh what they found through the process uh and where we're at at this point. So with that, Mr. Fam, if you'll uh give your report.
Uh thank you, Rick, and I thank you, board, for inviting me out to share with you the results of the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one audit. I'm happy to report that the district had a clean audit, uh which is very commendable. Um over the years, you know, the district- Over the years, you know, the district, for those of you been around, know the district has had a lot of findings and from year to year, you know, they've made changes and improvements and up to last year it was a clean audit and to have a second year of clean audits, it's very commendable. It takes a lot of effort and commitment and coordination with all the folks at the districts to make these improvements and to maintain that level. So very good job to the district and Rick and his team. So I'll start out with just going over some of the auditing standards and the scope that we covered for this year in our audit process. The American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, they issue statements of auditing standards that we adhere to in our audits and because the district is a local government, we do adhere to government auditing standards which are issued by the Government Accountability Office. And any agency that expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards is subject to a single audit. And the single audit, the Office of Business and Management, they issue these requirements through what's known as a uniform guidance, which we use in our audit to audit the districts of federal programs. This year was a very busy year for the district with respect to federal funding with a lot of the CARES funding, which I'll get into later. But for this audit year, we had selected the Title One program, the Esser One and Esser Two programs, as well as the District Special Education Program for our for review this year under the single audit. And in total, the district had just under thirty million dollars in federal awards, so quite a bit going on there. And then lastly, for the district's state programs, the Education Audit Appeals Panel issues an audit guide, which we use as part of our audit to audit the district's state programs. As far as our audit process, we have a three-phase audit, so about halfway through the year, we we go in and we check the district's internal controls, we document the district's processes, we do some sampling and testing of those controls to make sure that the internal controls are properly designed and implemented. In addition to that, we're doing some compliance procedures as well. And then after the year end, when the districts close their books, we'll come back and we'll we'll perform substantive procedures. This is where we're crunching the number, we're substantiating ending balances. And additionally, we'll go in and perform the remaining procedures we need with respect to the compliance aspect of the audit. So moving on, I wanted to just cover some key highlights. I don't want to go through everything since it could take some time. I just want to hit on some of the big changes and items for this year. The big one being the new CARES funding. You'll see the CARES funding was really meant to help the district address the COVID pandemic. And you'll see that this year the district's program revenues went up twenty five million dollars, so quite a bit going on, which it 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 took quite a bit of work on the district side to coordinate the spending of all those funds. One other thing I wanted to mention, GASB eighty four was implemented this last year, which addressed the district's fiduciary activities, particularly the Associated Student Body Accounts. So you won't see the Associated Student Body Accounts in in the financials this year. They have been with with GASB eighty four. They've been reported under the general fund and going forward, that's how you'll see the presentation with respect to the Associated Student Body Accounts. And the usual items, you know, the your the district's OPEB and pension plans always have a big impact on the financials. The net pension liability for at June thirtieth was a hundred ninety five million dollars. And the net OPEB liability was twenty five million. With respect to the funds, the general fund, the fund balance at June thirtieth was over thirty five million dollars, which puts the district at a healthy twelve point seven percent reserve. So yes, they're in good shape. And moving on to the audit results, like I said, we had a clean audit, so we issued a few opinions as usual. With respect to the financial statements, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is a good thing. It means that the financial statements were fairly presented in all material respects. The internal controls over financial reporting compliance, our audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses. And our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that were required to be reported under governmental auditing standards. And then lastly, with respect to compliance, the district complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements of state programs. And I wanted to take a moment to just thank Rick, Joe, and then their team for the help through the audit. I mean, with the pandemic and all the changes, you know, with independent study and the new funding. We we do understand that it was a lot of work and quite a toll on on their team, so we wanted to, you know, make that public that we appreciate their their effort in helping us get through this audit. So with that, I will open it up for any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Paul. Guys, I froze up for a minute. Do we have questions from trustees? Trustee Flores?
Thank you. It was a very thorough presentation and maybe this is a question for our deputy superintendent or our superintendent. How often do we do do we get to keep the same sort of firm to do the the another the audit every year or or do we get to change the firm every other year or every year? Because I remember reading something about that. So I'd just like to know a little bit more about that and thank you for your presentation, Paul.
Yeah, certainly. And Paul, please chime in too, from from your perspective as a CPA. We do need to at minimum rotate our lead auditor. We do have a contract with Siobhan, I believe it was for five years. And then at that point, more than likely, we'd go for RFP for another auditor. Or go for RFP to see who was the most responsive to our query, right?
And then you do have the option to just rotate on departments as well, such as just that you can have the same lead auditor on the job.
No, you did a phenomenal job. I was just curious about that. Thank you and thank you for your answer, Rick.
Are there questions from the board? Seeing none. This is an action item. Let's go to public comment.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E four, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. All right, back to the board for discussion, further questions or motion? Trustee Fong?
I'd like to move acceptance of the twenty 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 one independent audit report.
Okay, let's see. It has been moved by trustee Fong, seconded by trustee Flores for acceptance of the twenty 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 one independent audit. Let's have a vote.
Director Beard. Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. Great, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pham, and two years of clean audits. That's incredible. Great work, Rick, great work, Joel. We're we're doing something right.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield. I will just say quickly, it's not just Joel, it's not just myself, it's a team. Including our our school sites, our different departments, so a lot of work has gone into this, so thank you.
Thank you to the team. All right, moving on to agenda item E five, a discussion on safe routes to schools and update. We will be receiving an update on the collaboration between Safe Routes to School and Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Armstrong, and we have joining us Tina Panza, Director of Safe Routes to School.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, President Sheffield, trustees and Superintendent. For now, and before you again this evening to introduce Tina Panza, our representative for Safe Routes to Schools. Tina has been doing this work since two thousand and eight and our partnership is vital. And and I would say that there's been lots of conversation about how we partner and and engage those who are in support of the work that's happening at schools. And so one of the emerging themes that I've identified in educational services is the need to bring together our partners who provide critical support, resources and opportunities for our students. So just a side note that on May sixth, I've scheduled our first Educational Services Partners Meeting. And I had a chance to have a conversation with Tina about it, and I know she's excited to join. So I feel like the some of us, as we know, can really help move the work forward, whether we're inside the organization or we're supporting from the outside. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Panza for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong, and thank you, Superintendent Mel and everybody on the board. I'm going to share my screen so I can share my presentation. Just a second here. Put us in presentation mode. That was just like a lovely introduction and I am looking forward to that May sixth meeting. Some of you have seen my safety presentation. I was here last year, so it's great to be here again. Some of you are new, I know, to the district and to the program, so I'm really looking forward to this update and sharing. You may or may not know that our our primary goal of Safer Sis School is to increase the number of families who utilize active and alternative transportation safely to and from school and in their neighborhoods. And the programs expanded a lot. Dr. Armstrong mentioned that we've been doing this work since two thousand and eight, back in two thousand and eight, we served four schools. And over the next fourteen years, we've matured and expanded throughout the county. And the Sonoma County Transportation Authority administers the program, the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition implements it where I work. And they adopted the program in two thousand seventeen. And we are the K eight service provider. We do serve high schools as well in unlimited form. We serve more than sixty schools per year in a typical year. This year, we're serving slightly less just because of COVID. So before I get into the program details, I just want to take a moment to share why Safer Sis School initiatives are important. First of all, they really, they really do work. Studies have shown that comprehensive programs do increase the percentage of students who walk and bicycle to school and also increase their safety. In New York City, for example, there's a study that found a forty four percent decline in pedestrian injuries among schoolchildren in areas with Safer Sis School projects compared to no change in locations without Safer Sis School projects. And, you know, more active transportation also results in lower transportation costs for school districts and families and reduce traffic congestion. And this is just a net positive to the health of our students and the environment because kids are healthier just by the benefit of having the physical activity, but also our air is cleaner and we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we also know that air pollution causes increases asthma cases in children and children exposed to traffic pollution are more likely to have, you know, asthma, permanent lung defects and so higher risk of of illness in general. So getting people out of their cars is really just a smart thing to do for student health.
Can can we pause for just a moment? I see trustee Fong's hand raised. I don't know if this is, if you have a question pertaining to
Sorry, that is the second time I left it up.
I'm sorry, Tina, please continue.
No, that's okay. Hello, Tina. Hello, Tina. Thanks for being here.
Good to see you. Thank you. Also, another another really great program within Safer Sis School are supervised walking school bus programs. And they've been shown to reduce student absences and tardiness, successful walking school bus programs. So I want to share this. We've worked with schools in Santa Rosa City School District from the beginning of our program back in two thousand and eight. And in fact, and I mentioned this last year, it was, and it's worth mentioning again, it was a parent at Proctor Terrace Elementary School who showed me how to coordinate my very first International Walk and Roll to School Day event because that event predated the Safer Sis School programs or taking it over and taking ownership of that. And this year, our county Safer Sis program is providing support to eight schools in the Santa Rosa City School District. Schools do need to apply each year between February and April to receive services and we customize those services to each school based on our capacity and their needs. And there's definitely a lot of room for growth in the district, particularly with the middle school population. We do serve every school. Again, we look at our our capacity isn't the same for every school, but any school that wants a service, we figure out, you know, how to help them and what we can do for that school, even if it's just like an assembly or, you know, participating in one event or, you know, things like that. So with all these eight schools, these are, we consider them our comprehensive schools. So we do evaluation with those schools every year. So we do that by doing student arrival departure tallies, asking students how they travel to and from school. And we also do GIS student address maps to determine the status of and the potential for active transportation at a site to see how many kids of the quarter mile, the half mile, the one mile, the two mile radius. And this year, we actually established an MOU with the Santa Rosa City School District so that we can keep producing our GIS maps. We do exchange addresses with the district without student names on them. And, you know, there's some current concerns about that being private information, but, you know, we went through legal and we talked about it and we talked about how we use the data and we developed that MOU. So that is great. So going forward, we'll be able to keep doing these maps that, you know, hitches. And last year, I reported that thanks to cooperation from the district, we were able to provide a number of these GIS maps to Santa Rosa City Public Works for an active transportation grant for the Community Connector Bridge over the SRJC. And at the time when I presented last year, that grant hadn't been awarded yet, so we didn't know if it was successful. Well, it was successful. They did, the city did get that funding. And so that was great, like that did strengthen that application and that did and doing those maps was super helpful for that. And then we utilize the data as well as other factors, this data, like how many kids walk, how many kids bike, take the bus to travel on single family vehicles, as well as other factors like school demographics and location to determine which encouragement and education services would be the best fit for a given site. So it kind of varies from site to site. And if anyone wants to see this data for any of the eight schools that we're working with, that can be provided to you. In terms of program services, we our services include support for encouraging families to walk, bike and carpool to school. We also do fourth grade bicycle rodeos, which are like bicycles on bike skill safety classes. We do education pedestrian bike safety education at the second through fifth grade level. With middle schools, we have a drive your bike curriculum, bikes, skill safety lessons, and we also do youth engagement in the form of bike clubs. We do community education and outreach at school at school events and community events. And we also have community learn to ride workshops, family bike workshops. We have a bike camp. And we do family fun rides. So lots and lots of different services that reach different people in different ways. With the active encouragement encouragement program, with our active transportation encouragement program, that is, that's the kind of the basis, the anchor for that are walk and roll to school day events. So these events like International Walk and Roll to School Day and monthly walk and roll to school days, they are just about encouraging families to walk, bike, scoot, skate, or even carpool or bus, depending on the site from home or from a meetup spot at distance away from school instead of driving in their single family cars. That's what we're trying to sort of educate about. And we provide our participating schools with a variety of promotional resources to support them and outreach through their newsletters, through their websites, through social media, their teachers. We also provide them with modest incentives like stickers and pencils and blinky lights and things like that. We provide schools with that want to do the Golden Sneaker Award, which is a classroom competition that they can have on a walk, roll day or any day to see how many kids walked or rolled or who the who the highest percentage class was. We'll make a, you know, shiny blinged up golden sneaker for the schools. And we do work with schools to establish like good meetup spots and help them promote meetup spots. good meetup spots and help them promote meetup spots um, to, uh, you know, for walking school buses or bike trains. And the whole intention of the events is sort of to make walking and biking, carpooling, all of that to school fun and raise awareness, build community. Um, and we didn't do it last year. We didn't do in-person events last year. We had a whole virtual program, but this year we're doing them again. All of our schools that are participating do their walk and roll days at least, uh, I would say at least five times a year and most of them are doing a monthly event. Um, and not all are able to do welcome tables right now, giving out prizes just because of volunteerism, you know, volunteers is a little bit harder this year, but they're still encouraging it and trying to make that happen. And, uh, we also, uh, in addition to our walk, roll day events, we do monthly challenges and we, we, all of our challenges are active um, and are intended to raise awareness about the benefits of walking and bicycling to school. Um, so we had like a gratitude challenge in November, kids could win a pumpkin pie. We did a walk, uh, you know, scavenger hunt on your route to school in December. This month we, um, are educating about the benefits of turning off your car engine. It's waiting for more than thirty seconds. So we have an aisle free challenge. We have an art contest next month. We're doing a mileage challenge in March, an earth month challenge in April, and we're going to be celebrating National Bike to School Day in May, and we're actually going to try to get high schools to participate in that event. So I'm going to be reaching out to high schools um, for Bike to School Day and try to get, this is the first time we're going to do a countywide Bike to School Day event. Um, on the education front, like I said, uh, in that, that previous slide, we do uh, the on bike education with the second through, with fourth graders and, uh, bike and pedestrians education with second to fifth graders. But this is some pictures of our bike rodeos and classroom ed. And these are, this is, these are the schools where we're doing fourth grade bike rodeos. We did um, a bunch in October. We have a couple happening in May. Um, and then there's a couple of schools where we're not doing bike rodeos, but we are providing other forms of either classroom education and we're inviting the Bike Mobile, which is a free bike repair service to come out. Uh, last year we also offered synchronous live Zoom classes, which we're not doing for the most part this year, except with middle schools. Our middle school, our middle school virtual program consisted of ten driver bike modules that were about ten minutes apiece that could be easily incorporated into PE classes. So the intention last year was the PE teachers would show the videos at the beginning of the class and the kids could do something active after. Well, those went up, those were really popular, like the teach, the schools that piloted that last year um, are doing it this year, even though they're in person for PE. And we reached out to a number of schools in the district, in your district to find out, you know, do you want to kind of take on, on this driver bike curriculum to get the, you know, the, the knowledge out to the the middle school kids. And we do have some interests, um, some from Comstock, from Ringa Valley Middle School. I'm still, and from Santa Rosa Middle School. So I'm hoping we can get to more middle school kids through PE even with our own limited capacity to, you know, do on bike classes because the content's really great and, uh, not all PE teachers really know how to teach bike safety effectively. So excited about that, uh, possible expansion. Uh, in the community, I mentioned that we do learn to ride a bike classes. We do family bike workshops. And in Santa Rosa, we're having a kids bike adventure camp in June. Uh, the learn to ride classes start this February, um, Wednesdays in Santa Rosa once a month. And then, um, we have a free family bike workshop, which isn't in Santa Rosa City School, but it's open to students all over Santa Rosa. It's going to be at Manzanita Elementary School. That will, that's a workshop where we can get kids and families on bikes and we take them on the road. We actually show them how to ride on the road. Um, so these community opportunities are mostly for your very, very low cost. The learn to ride classes are five dollars a class, I think, and the family bike workshops are free. Um, so, uh, in terms of the opportunities, uh, I just always want to talk, when I present at PTAs and school wars and different, um, community groups, I always want to, you know, talk about how we can partner and, uh, Dr. Armstrong already has great ideas and I'm so excited about that. Um, I just think, um, I just recommend that you just continue to partner and collaborate with the city of Santa Rosa to fund or promote relevant projects and programs. And I'm not just talking about education programs, but infrastructure projects like we did with that ATP grant that they just got. Being aware of what the city has on their plate and and sharing with the city what your needs are in terms of like, we need a crosswalk here. We want to see bike lanes here. That kind of open line of communication is really important because the cities don't always see what's happening at the school level and they should be aware of what your needs are. Um, I would just also encourage school principals, teachers and parents to champion the program. We've got a number of schools that are not in the program right now that could benefit from it. Um, and then there also are policies that the district could have regarding bicycle and pedestrian safety education or encouragement. Um, and then, uh, we have, uh, a number of your schools have family coordinators that, uh, do a lot of great work and in, in some cases they are sort of our Safer's to school liaison, but it's not necessarily their assigned role. So that could be something that could be sort of part of the job description with family coordinators if it fits in. And then just policies regarding school seating and to district transfers to keep people, you know, to encourage people to, um, utilize their neighborhood school whenever feasible. Those are all things that can impact how people travel and the choices they make. Um, and I don't have a slide on our website, but our website is sonomasafereouts.org. Uh, and all of our current challenges are up on the website. So if you want to go up there and check out the idol free challenge or February's art contest and download the sheet or sign the online idol free pledge, you can go up there and, and do that anytime. All right. Well, thank you so much. And if anyone has any questions or comments, um, go for it.
Thank you, Tina. Bring it back to the board for, um, questions. I know I have a question. I love the program and I love the services and thank you so much for the presentation. We all know it's great for the community, great for the environment, great for the health of our kids. Um, and like you, a proctor parent also first introduced me to bicycle rodeos. So much fun there. Um, that parent was my wife.
Right. You used to work with your wife.
Um, I, can you give us more details about bike camp?
Yes, um, that is a collaboration with the Santa Rosa City Park and Recreation Department. They are, they are, it is not a free camp, unfortunately. I wish it could be. They are charging for the camp, but we are, um, we run the camp. We fully staff it. Um, we did it last year for the first time and it was fabulous. I think we had thirteen or fifteen kids. And we do, it's like nine AM to twelve PM or one PM. We may be making it one PM this year. It was twelve PM last year. By a camp and we do everything from bike games, bike activities, riding, we go on rides every single day. So it's like a, it's an educational camp, but it's a fun camp. So the kids leave camp early feeling confident for, about riding, but they don't, you know, realize that they're kind of like being, you know, instructed on safety the entire time. So, yeah.
Okay, I know it's, it's coming on that time of year as parents are starting to think about summer, summer camps. So thank you.
Yeah, it's for ages eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve. Great. Thank you. Um, Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Okay, unmuted. Um, thank you so much, Tina. This is such a great program. I, I have also loved though uh, walk and roll and, um, my kids have always loved the bike rodeos. A couple of questions. I also loved when you do like family bike days, there's that, you know, person who comes and does like quick tune-ups and teaches kids how to put their chains back on. And I'm just wondering if there's any connectivity back to, you know, bike mechanics or any CTE programs that we could do over time um, in our schools to have kids connect with, you know, alternative transportation and supporting that skill set. Is that?
You know, uh, uh, our program does not currently have that as part of our scope. However, we have at different times done, like we had a program with, where we partnered with community bikes and had a group of twelve kids for twelve weeks and did, you know, bike mechanic things, you know, taught them basically how mechanics. Uh, I know that there used to be a teacher at Annalee High School, this is in the center of the school district that had a station and there was, there was some, you know, there are teachers that do that. But it's not, it's not a big, no, but I think it's a great idea. And I will say that Kevin Anderson, who used to be, who is a League of American Certified, uh, Bicycle Instructor, who used to run the high school program that is now sunsetting. Um, that was at Daily Axe and previously at the Climate Center, has now, uh, moved over to CHOPS, uh, Teen Center as their director of, uh, student activities or child, and he is interested in doing something like that at CHOPS. So I think that that, there's a great opportunity, um, to partner with CHOPS. And do work like that. And there is a great opportunity to do that within schools. The funding just has to be there for the equipment and there needs to be a, a person that has those skills or at least to partner with a mechanic that's willing to be their volunteer, be paid to do that work.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you.
Trustee Fong, you had your hand raised? No?
Really quick, uh, Tina, thank you so much. Do you do advocacy with Santa Rosa City? I think you mentioned this in terms of the safety corridors of, of riding a bike or walking around our schools? Um, well, as part of your.
Yeah, I personally can't do advocacy myself because my program is taxpayer dollar funded. However, the Bicycle Coalition, the Oregon, the Host Organization for Safer's is, that is the mission of the Bike Coalition. We're an advocacy organization. So and then what we do is more try to connect schools with opportunities and, you know, sharing their issues, like identifying what the barriers are and then with the, you know, with public works or sharing info with public works and what's happening, what they're doing with schools so that people can participate in those decision-making processes, if that makes sense. You know, like when there's public meetings.
Okay. I'm just interested in safety around our schools with the traffic. Also, I'm also interested in schools, they, they get to join in because not even half our elementary schools have joined your program. Yeah, so it's up to the schools to join.
It is right now up to the schools.
Okay.
Yeah, there needs to be somebody at the school who, um, champions the program because we don't have the capacity to be at a school and run a walk, roll day or we visit the schools and do the education, but we don't have the capacity to actually, you know, put it in the school newsletter that you're having a walk, roll day or, you know, copying the challenge sheets to give them to the teachers, things like that. There needs to be someone at the school that'll take that on. Usually it's a parent or a teacher, but sometimes it's the principal or a, an admin staff person, like a secretary.
We're really looking at, um, you know, to the board, talking to you. If we're really looking at equity and transportation as part of equity and transportation as part of freedom and efficacy, then yeah, we don't want to keep putting things on teachers to do or principals to do. So I don't know how we're going to maybe marshal more parents to do this, but it's really something that I think is, is part of our work, um, with the city involved too. Okay, that's, that's a comment, so I'm going to stop. Thank you so much.
No, it's really a good, a good point though, and I want to say that a lot of times though, the principal is sort of the, it makes a difference when the principal is supportive and wants it to happen because then that principal will make it a priority to mention in a parent back to school night or a parent meetings or, you know, maybe to teachers, there could be a teacher that is a super interested in that. They are not forced to do it, but they're just like a bicyclist. They want to do it. So that it does make a big difference when the principal is, is, is interested.
Trustee De La Cruz?
I have one more quick question, probably not for Tina, but more for facilities folks at our district. Do all of our school sites have a place for people to store bikes safely, lock them up? Um, you know, like, how are we as a district supporting the infrastructure that facilitates our kids? You know, regardless of whether or not there's a leader inside of this school who's really helping to connect with Tina's program. Do we have, do we have those? Do we have equity in at least the infrastructure to store and have bikes?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know, Deputy.
I, I know there are facilities at all sites, but I could not comment tonight on what is at each site, but we can certainly look into that.
All right. Are there questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a discussion item. We are going to take it to public comment.
If there are any members of the public could like to comment on item E five, please raise your hand at this time. And Anastasio would like to comment. Is this Anastasio Tovar Rose?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think this is a good program, but it needs a lot of work. We need to work on, on the quarter door over the one oh one. There was a project years past in city council that was turned down. That was going to connect Conningtown to the Junior College. I think we need to work on that. I think, um, I agree with Fong that, you know, it's a great program, but it's not really pushed hardly anywhere. Our schools, it's not the best. And I think we need to work harder on that. I mean, for instance, for me, it would take me an hour to clear across from where I live to get to my school. Um, we need to have maybe a drop-off zone. I'm suggesting maybe like CHOPS be a car drop-off bike exchange and it's a little easier to access there from other pathways that are off the Dover daughter trail from there. Um, but I think this is a great program, but also it needs more work on it. Thank you.
Anastasio, that, that Community Connector Bridge is what I mentioned, um, that the city did, uh, secure funding for um, in that ATP application they applied for next last year. So it does take time when funding is secured for a national project to break ground. But it does look like that's going to be happening soon. But I agree with everything you said, and I do think that way more investment should be made in infrastructure, um, around the city to make it easier to walk and bike. That's number one, I think. I mean, education is very important too, but we need the infrastructure.
President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
All right, I'm bringing it back to the board for further discussion or further questions. All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, Tina. It's great to see you.
Yeah.
A great presentation.
Thanks so much.
And, and make sure you, you know, you, you stay in touch with us so we know what we can do to help you as well.
Will do. All right. Thanks so much. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to agenda item E six. This is an action item, resolution for February as African American History Month. The board will consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, dash twenty-nine, recognizing February as National African American History Month. We have, um, Dr. Armstrong, um, going to present with us.
Perfect. Thank you, President Sheffield, trustees and Superintendent Trenell again. Um, so on behalf of our fifty African American staff members and their allies, it's my pleasure to introduce this resolution. And that's a resolution that recognizes February as National African American History Month, or in some communities, it's known simply as Black History Month. By adopting this resolution on this twenty-sixth day of January, you join others in ninety-six years of celebration. Also, you affirm ongoing critical reflection and courageous conversations concerning racism, bias and social injustice. You affirm black lives and academic excellence by not accepting the soft bigotry of low expectations. You affirm this year's theme, which is black health and wellness. This resolution is, the, the resolution is there for you to review, but is it okay if I read the concluding statement?
Please do.
Okay, so now therefore be it resolved by the governing board of the Santa Rosa City Schools District that the district takes great pleasure in recognizing February twenty twenty-two as African American History Month. Urges everyone to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African Americans during African American History Month and encourages the staff and students of Santa Rosa City Schools to recognize not only the many different talents of African Americans, but also the great achievements, contributions and sacrifices they have made to help create equity and equality. they have made to help create equity and equality inside and outside of the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Do we have questions from the board? It's questions on this resolution. It is an action item to seeking questions. Seeing none, public comment. Can we go to public comment?
Sorry, I have one question, President Sheffield.
Oh, yes, please.
I would just love to know, you know, how we are rolling out in our, in our curriculum, in all of our schools, you know, our connection to this resolution, how we're making that true, this dedication, you know, to, to this work, to this result, resolution of the board inside of each of our schools, inside of each of our classrooms.
That's a great question and it's timely. We actually have Curtis Acosta up. Um, actually I was able to see him today, meet with him and, and his uh, work partner, and they will be doing crush training with all of our administrators tomorrow on our PD day. I mean, there's definitely continued work over the next um, couple of months that will engage our educators, so both teachers and, um, and leaders in the work. And then of course, just the work that we continue to do around curriculum, our planning. I'm so excited to hear the conversation um, around data and the priority. It's definitely a priority of ours and, you know, many people who hear me speak on topics such as this, I often say equity is the byway to justice. And so it's taking those little roads and making sure that we're making the moves that we need to make so that um, justice is our true outcome. And so I think when I read through the resolution and, and modified, kept some things in place, but made some modifications, um, my mindset was justice. Um, and it's the work that we're all committed to in Santa Rosa.
Thank you so much, Dr. Armstrong, for that, for that beautiful answer. And for really making sure that the resolutions of this board are made real inside of the classroom and just super grateful for that. For making those things connect, um, for making those dots, um, not, not only connect, but making this intention true. So thankful.
Great question, Dr. De La Cruz. And I love that equity is the byway to justice. Other questions from the board? Okay, now we will go to public comment.
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on item E six, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Okay, back to the board for discussion, further questions or a motion. I see, uh, Trustee Fong?
So I'm going to piggyback on, uh, Trustee De La Cruz's comment and, and thank you very much, Dr. Armstrong, for that presentation today of the resolution. And I want to connect some dots. First of all, being Black History Month and an Ed Sorensen article that just came out this week citing that black youth suicide rates have, have almost doubled. They used to be below, uh, white kids and Asian kids, um, but now they're higher, much higher, just in the past six years. So something's going on. And also we have Panamer, um, Panorama. Is that a Panorama? And so when we're diving down into who's needing help, let's make sure that we're really watching our kids individually, per kid, unique equity basis, one at a time. And so in terms of making this active and really making this work, and ethnic studies, all of it goes together. And it's all connected and we all have pieces. So I just laid out there for all of us uh, in our district to pay attention to these pieces. So, thank you. It cannot be a resolution that we put on the shelf. We have to make it active. And, and these are some of the ways that I can see where we can make it active. So thank you, Dr. Armstrong, for overseeing this work and super Tina Trinell.
Thank you, Trustee Fong. And you know, as I mentioned at the opening of tonight's meeting with, uh, the release of the Portrait of Sonoma County highlighting the disparities and some very shocking disparities um, in the portrait, particularly around African American black population within the county. Um, Trustee Medina?
I would just like to move that we approve resolution 2021 slash 22 dash 29, recognizing February as National African American History Month.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Medina approving the resolution, recognizing February as African American History Month, seconded by Director De La Cruz. Can we take a vote?
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
President Sheffield?
Aye. Motion passes, moving on to agenda item E seven. This is another action item, a resolution recognizing week of school counselors supporting, um, sorry, week of school counselors. And we have Dr. Armstrong again.
Thank you. And Debbie Cardoza, if she can be brought over. I appreciate that, President Sheffield trustees and Superintendent Trinell. So there are 58 reasons why I bring forth this resolution this evening. 58 represents the number of counselors we'd like to celebrate on National School Counseling Week. I mean, Educational Services, Kesa Inamar, Heidi Petzaretti, and Debbie Cardoza um, help support those 58 with a critical formation of healthy goals, mindsets, and behaviors. And in celebration of all 58 counselors, I'm going to ask Director Cardoza to present the resolution.
Thank you. In collaboration with Coordinator Kesa Inamar and Counselor in Special Assignment Heidi Petrezetti, I've had the privilege to work with the counselors this school year. They are an incredibly dedicated group that strives to provide students with the academic, social, emotional, and career development support needed to, um, for students to be successful in school and prepared for life after they graduate. Our school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, and interests. They utilize community resources to enhance the support provided to students and families. They work with teachers, administrators, and other staff to support students with reaching their full potential, help parents focus on ways to support, um, their students and their children, further, um, their educational goals and develop both personally and socially, um, throughout their time with us. And as we all know and appreciate, counselors have worked through extremely challenging circumstances to maintain the services they provide to students and families during the pandemic. And I am incredibly proud to bring forward this resolution for the board's consideration to recognize the week of February 7th through the 11th as week of the school counselor in Santa Rosa City Schools and publicly acknowledge our counselors for everything they do to support our staff, students, and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. You know, I've said it before, 2022 has been a really rough year. And we need to stand there, um, right there with our, um, our school counselors, give them the support that they need as well and the recognition and the appreciation. Um, do we have questions from the board? Seeing no questions, we can go to public comment.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment on item E seven, resolution recognizing week of the school counselors, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Great, thank you. All right, back to the board for discussion, further questions or motion?
I'd like to move to pass the resol, oh, sorry. Dr. McCormick?
Go for it, go for it.
I'd like to move to adopt the resolution recognizing uh, February 7th to 11th as the week of school council.
Second.
Okay, moved by Director De La Cruz, seconded by Director McCormick to approve the resolution recognizing, um, the week of school counselor. Can we have a vote?
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Sheffield?
Aye. All right, the motion passes and we have, um, Trustee McCormick, hand raised.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
My second.
Okay, extending the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, seeing no oppose, okay, meeting extended till 11 o'clock. Moving on quickly to agenda item E eight, this is another public hearing. This is the naming of the Santa Rosa School Track. The board will consider, um, a, but will, will conduct a public hearing uh, and the naming of Santa Rosa High School Track after retired track and field coach, um, Doug, uh, Quarter March. And this is a public meeting, so I'm going to open, open up our hearing. Hope I did that correctly, Superintendent Trinell? Did I get that one? Okay. Um, so at this time, we're looking for input comments from the public.
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment during this public hearing, item E eight, uh, please raise your hand at this time. And President Sheffield, there are no hands raised. Whoop, I'm sorry, President Sheffield, there is a hand.
I see a one hand raised.
Just was raised, yeah. Kathy Seiple?
President Sheffield? Hi there. Um, I am a proud Panther myself, um, mother of three graduating, um, folks from Santa Rosa High School, and I can't think of a greater way to honor, um, the life work and ongoing work of Doug, uh, Quarter Marsh than to name the field after him. Um, he continuously, um, is able to gather over a hundred kids for cross-country and track and field um, for 20 plus years and has left an indelible mark on the hearts of, um, so many kids. My, my own especially. He is just an incredible person and I, I, I can't speak highly enough about Doug and Carrie and the whole track and field cross-country program at Santa Rosa High and think that that's a great way to honor, um, Doug and all the work that he's done for the kids um, of, not just Santa Rosa High, he really, he reaches out across, um, all the schools and, and anyways, I highly recommend that that happens. I think that would be very cool.
Thank you. President Sheffield, oh, there is another hand raised. Anastasio Tovar Rose?
Thank you. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, speaking of the track and field, I like to see more track and field events happening in the lower elementary levels. Um, I grew up in a Central Valley and track and field was huge and almost every sixth grade, maybe fifth grade offered a track and field um, program in the elementary school. And I think that's something to be, a little looked on and grow in our school district. And then a little bit bigger in the ele, uh, in the middle school. I know a lot of middle schools offer it, but all of our middle school tracks are just, I can't believe they're even allowed to be even open because some of them have huge holes and I think that's something that we need to focus on and spend so many on that too. Thank you.
Thank you. And now President Sheffield, I can say there are no other hands raised.
All right, now, um, I see Carrie Joseph, bring it back to the board. And do I close the, I, I just point a clarification, I'm going to close, close the hearing. All right, and bringing it back to the board. And we're ready for you, Carrie.
Oh, great. Hi.
Actually, I could introduce it, please, Carrie, first. Thank you. So members of the boards, Superintendent Trinell, uh, tonight we're bringing, uh, a celebration of sorts, uh, in honor of Doug Quartermarsh. I hope I'm saying his last name right. I tried practicing it several times. Who was a 27-year track and field and cross-country coach, uh, at Santa Rosa High School. Uh, joining me tonight is Carrie Joseph, who coached alongside uh, Coach Quartermarsh for, I think, 23 years. Uh, give or take, uh, right in that range. Uh, and, uh, Dr. Kimberly Clissel, the principal of Santa Rosa High, uh, as outlined in the board cover, he made a tremendous impact on the, not only the school site, uh, but the track and field program, the cross-country program, as well as uh, the entire North Bay region, uh, and the reach was, uh, farther or further than that as well. Uh, as a track and field athlete myself in college, I have even heard of him, uh, not growing up in this area. So he was, uh, well-known and, and well-respected. Uh, along, uh, the board cover, uh, there's a timeline that this was brought forward by Ms. Joseph, uh, starting back in 2019, uh, in a way to, uh, honor, uh, the former coach, uh, through board policy and then ultimately the pandemic, uh, slowing some movement down along the way, as noted. Uh, we are bringing this forward tonight for consideration. Uh, another point I want to make is I, I think there may have been two folders with a lot of collateral in there, speaking to what the coach meant to the school site and the community. Uh, one of the documents was not in the folder that I uploaded that included testimonials from athletes going back to the 1990s, I think, uh, 95, there was a student athlete from 95 that, uh, made a comment about this uh, that we'll be happy to share with the board and include in the board minutes as well uh, as another piece of collateral. So I wanted to, uh, make sure you're aware of that and, and I will say without going, uh, putting it up on the screen and going through, uh, 25 or so comments on there, uh, they were all very positive and supportive, uh, of not only, uh, what was accomplished with the coach athletically, uh, but also personally and the personal relationships that he made uh, with his, uh, student athletes. So, uh, as I mentioned, uh, both Ms. Joseph and, uh, Dr. Clissold are here uh, that can speak, uh, firsthand knowledge about the coach, uh, as well as what they went through at the school site uh, with producing, uh, not just the collateral of praise, but the processes that they went through if there was questions about that. Uh, so that I will, uh, turn it over to the board.
Thank you, Rick. Um, all right, Coach Joseph, anything else to add? And we have, uh, Dr. Clissold as well.
Oh, I'm just, I, I'm just really excited to be here. I've been waiting a long time to, to put this proposal in front of people who can make decisions. Uh, and I know you guys have spent the last two years like making super stressful, difficult, complicated, like keep you up at night decisions. And I can guarantee you that this decision will make you feel like you're watching puppies frolicking in the grass. It's going to make you feel so good. It's gonna, you know, it's just like a no-brainer. At least hopefully it's been presented as a no-brainer. So I'm hoping that makes you feel good, but I'm just really thankful for your work and hope, hope all the documents got, got looked at and, and I think you can see overwhelmingly there's universal love and admiration and respect for Doug and I'm just really thrilled that you guys are taking this up. Um, happy to answer specific questions, but all I can tell you is that, you know, Doug is like the emotional spine of our program and as Mr. Edson mentioned, it's not just us, it's the whole community, it's adults, it's kids, it's teenagers, it's, it's, uh, you know, families that have been involved with us over so many years and he, he has a huge, huge impact, huge impact on so many people. So, yeah, any questions you want to ask, that's, I'm, I'm ready to take them.
Thanks, Coach. Anything to add, um, Dr. Clissold, before we go into questions?
Uh, I just really want to, um, thank, uh, Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson for his, uh, support process and, uh, Superintendent Trinell and the rest of the cabinet. Uh, we have been working on this for, um, a really long time. Um, I, I remember getting, uh, an email and then a quick sidebar from, uh, Coach Joseph about wanting to do this uh, shortly after we had the privilege of getting our track redone. And, um, even just entertaining the question of, uh, adding a name to the track, not the field, it will still remain Nevers Field. Um, but the, uh, idea of having, uh, the Doug Quartermarsh Track. But the idea of having the Doug Quartermarch track and it, while it's taken so long, it was an exciting question to put out to our stakeholders in the community from students, former students to current students, to teachers, to the Santa Rosa Foundation, all we found was excitement, which was nice in our current era that had a lot of ups and downs, as Coach Joseph talked about. And, you know, it just goes to show you what an impact a coach can make on a community and the impact that, that Coach Quartermarch has made on Santa Rosa High School, Santa Rosa City Schools, and so I couldn't be happier to be here this evening to lend my support, and if there's any questions that I can answer, I am happy to do that alongside Coach Joseph, so thank you very much for having us here this evening.
Thank you, Kimberly. Trustee Fong, question?
I don't have a question, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
There are legendary coaches, and certainly he is one of them. And I wanna thank you for waiting so long for to bring this to the board, plus just tonight, waiting so long to bring it to the board. It's late, so thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that we name the Santa Rosa High School Track in honor of retired coach Doug Court, Court of March.
So, we have motion and seconded, moved by trustee Fong, seconded by trustee De La Cruz. We take a vote?
Can I vote?
Absolutely.
Adita?
Don't we have public comments, I'm sorry?
I, I think we, we, we jumped to a motion for the action item on agenda E nine. So we're just gonna hold off, I guess we ended our discussion and we did start our, procedurally, apparently we, we started, we went right into agenda item E nine, which is the action item of naming it, so we will we have a motion, we'll, we'll just hold on to that. We will have public comment on the, on the actual action item.
President Sheffield?
Yes.
Sorry, we already took public comment through the public hearing.
Okay.
There is no need to take during this item.
Thank you for the clarification, okay.
Director De La Cruz has a son on the team, maybe she wants to comment.
I was, I was gonna say, I have a twitchy freshman who's actually waiting to make public comment and trying to figure out how to work Zoom at whatever, ten PM. But I would like to just comment and add my voice to the, to the many that have celebrated Coach for all he does, and it has just been not even a year that I have known and seen his impact and in in some of the most difficult times in our existence. I've seen the impact of Doug's work on kids and keeping them healthy and keeping them, you know, we talked about that like self-efficacy, that, that spirit that kids so desperately need to have when things are hard and seeing how different it is that my kid walks around kind of in some of his classes and the way he walks around when he's with Doug. You know, he sets a bar that is so high and also looks so effortless and is so beautiful. And he's really made such a difference in just this, you know, little year, this really little hard year in my child's life and in so many others that I've seen him touch and just whether it's pancake breakfasts or walking him, watching him walk around with his dog with that big old smile on his face, and so I just, I wanted to read one thing and the packet that to me just is such a beautiful way of recognizing what this action also means for, for Doug. And he just says, my twenty-eight years at Santa Rosa High as track and field and cross-country coach have been the joy of my life. So my question is, how, how big are the letters Quartermarch gonna be on that, on that track? Cause I, I hope that, you know, we can make them taller than him.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's my point, cause he really is a giant in so many of our lives and so many of our kids' lives, so. I just couldn't speak with more love and pride about this action and you're right, it's better than puppies frolicking in a field.
Thank you for sharing that with us, trustee De La Cruz. Do you have your son, was he was trying to get in during public comment? I mean, we can bend the rules here for the, for the love fest here, I don't know. Still available, but.
Well, he's here, he's got his hand up.
Let's, 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 let's bring him over.
Let's go, I may. There he is.
I'm a freshman at Santa Rosa High School. And I've completed my first full season of cross-country. And I can like, like, it's like, it's like hard to explain with words, like how that affected like my experience, my first like semester of high school as a freshman and cross-country is just like amazing, it's, it's like it's amazing in so many ways and it's amazing how many friends you make and how it like causes you to push yourself in different ways and it really builds your character. Just like as an individual and it, I like, if there's any other like students watching, I encourage you to join because it is the most fun you'll have all year. But, uh, to talk more about Doug, I've met him, first time I met Doug was at preseason training in the summer. And he brought Simba and Simba is his dog. And Simba and Doug are the dynamic duo that just bring like happiness and joy and like just love to like the entire environment, like in cross-country. He's like the master Shifu of our team, like he's just like amazing. And yeah, he's, um, he's amazing and I think he really deserves this track to be named after him, after all of the devotion and heart that he's put into cross-country and track. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. All right, so we had a motion and please help me out here, who made the motion?
Sheffield, I believe it was Director.
Trustee Fong?
In a second by Director De La Cruz, is that correct?
Great, thank you, okay, ready for a vote?
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Mani Eri?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye, and congratulations, Coach.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Sheffield?
Aye. All right, puppies in the grass, cheers for the Quartermarch track at Santa Rosa High, motion passes.
I got it on film, thank you guys. Thank you so much, I cannot wait to tell them, I've been trying to keep it on the down low, but ready to open it up, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Coach, good to see you. All right, moving on to agenda item E ten. This is another public hearing. California School Employee Association, Chapter seventy-five Sunshine Proposal for Contract reopeners with San Rosa City Schools for twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a legally required public hearing on the proposed CSCA Sunshine Proposal. So at this time, the board will conduct a public hearing on, on the Sunshine Proposal. I'll open hearing for comment and community input.
If there are members of the public who'd like to comment during this public hearing, item E ten, please raise your hands. And Robert Johns would like to comment.
Hi, my name is Robert Johns, I'm a district school psychologist with our preschool program. I'm really hoping that CSCA and the district can work together to help solve our extreme shortage in special education assistance by raising the position on the pay scale, in addition to any across-the-board percent increases that CSCA is able to negotiate for all members. Last I checked, the district had only filled forty-five percent of these positions with district employees, a problem which existed even before COVID. Additionally, our district assistants get paid five to ten dollars less per hour than the contracted assistants who work next to them doing the same job. For our students' safety and ability to access their education, this deserves to be a top priority for the district during negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
All right, thank you. No more comment from the public. The public meeting is closed. Bring it back to the board, we have Assistant Superintendent Shepherd with us. Anything you would like to add? Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trunell, members of the board. The, this, this action is bringing to light or sunshining CSCA's proposals and they're, they're sunshining Article twelve holidays and the placement of holidays plus two professional development days and they're also sunshining Article thirteen, compensation fair and equitable living wage. So before you for consideration, should you accept these openers that will allow us to begin entering into negotiations for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
All right, we are looking at an action item E eleven, accept, acceptance of the California School Employee Association, Chapter seventy-five Sunshine Proposals for Contract reopeners with the San Rosa City Schools for twenty-two, twenty-three. Trustee Fong?
I so move acceptance of California School Employee Association, Chapter twenty-five Sunshine Proposals for Contract reopeners with S R C S for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
And seconded, motion from trustee Fong, seconded from trustee De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Mani Eri?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Sheffield?
Aye. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd. Motion passes, we are moving on to agenda item E twelve, an action item approval of an addendum memorandum of understanding reached with Santa Rosa City Schools and Santa Rosa Teachers Association regarding safe return to school guidelines. This is an addendum memorandum. We have Assistant Superintendent Shepherd, anything you would like to add?
Thank you, President Sheffield. Yes, this addendum to MOU number five with S R T A is in response to the, the order by the Health Officer of Sonoma County, C nineteen dash thirty-three that was issued on December twenty-third, so that required us to come back to the table and to discuss revising our agreement that we had reached in September. And this agreement, essentially, the addendum allows us to discuss the working conditions and we reached agreement for members having to have a booster shot by February first or have submitted twice weekly testing. So before your consideration is this MOU to cover those changing requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, do we have questions, questions from the board? Seeing none, moving on to public comment. Open up for public comment at this time.
If there are any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E twelve, please raise your hands at this time. There are no hands raised.
Thank you, bringing it back to the board for discussion, for the questions or motion, trustee McCormick.
I'd like to move that we approve, the approval of the Addendum Memorandum of Understanding Reached with Santa Rosa City Schools and the Santa Rosa Teachers Association Regarding Safe Return to School Guidelines.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion from trustee McCormick, second from trustee De La Cruz, or I see a hand, is that your hand raised, trustee Fong?
It was, but it's not anymore.
Okay. Motion and second, and we are ready for a vote?
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Mani Eri?
Aye.
Director.
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Sheffield?
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item E thirteen, a discussion item, the twenty-two, twenty-three Governor's Budget Proposal. The board will receive a report on Governor Newsom's proposed twenty-two, twenty-three state budget that was released just on January tenth, we have Rick Edson and Joel Dantus with us.
Good evening, if we could bring Joel over, please. So as Joel's coming over, I'll touch on a couple of things, Joel's gonna share his screen with the presentation. I will warn you that we're not gonna go through all thirty-six slides that were on the presentation. Board packet, we have, I know everyone's disappointed. We have cut it down significantly just to hit on some high points that we were, we felt were important during this. I will share that as great as everything sounds, there's still a tremendous amount of uncertainty. You know, we are eagerly anticipating the release of the initial trailer bill language to see how some of the items in the budget are, it was initially planned to be spent and what the full impact could possibly be to Santa Rosa City Schools, and so we'll touch on that briefly. I know Joel will go over this on one of the slides. You know, it's been talked about a lot, especially in education, a five-point-three-three percent COLA for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I, I just would like to remind the board that when we presented first interim, we had made an assumption in alignment with the LAO and used five-point-three-five, so we've already incorporated much of that increase that was expected into our first interim report, which will carry forward into second interim and then budget creation and ultimately adoption in June. And I'll let Joel speak to that in, in just a few moments. So Joel, if you, and now that Joel's over, introducing Joel Dantus joining me tonight for this presentation, if you can show the presentation, Joel, and go to slide three. So, as we do on every presentation, we show where we're at in the annual budget cycle. Outlined in bright green tonight is the Governor's Proposed Budget. We should have actually put something around prior year audit actual since we heard about those earlier as well, so this meeting is taking care of two of the items in our annual budget cycle. With that, I will hand it over to Joel to go through a condensed version of the presentation to touch on some high points and talk about some of the interesting items that are in the Governor's Budget Proposal, so with that, Mr. Dantus, please take it away.
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trunell, members of the board, thanks for having me tonight. Like Rick said, on, on January tenth, the governor sent out his two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget. And since that date, we've been in attendance on a couple workshops from some associations that kind of break the budget down and give us what that means to our school district with School Services of California, and then we attended one at SCO with Capital Advisors. So the information we're presenting tonight is really their words that we're now passing on to our local board and, and community. And giving this information that comes out of the governor's budget. So governor is proposing two hundred and eighty-six billion dollars in the state budget. You can see here are the agencies that are part of that budget. And as you can see, K through twelve education represents twenty-five percent of that. That's here's the breakdown of that, our agency budget. As you can see, this is seventy-two point four billion of it. Now, this is state funds. There are a few, you know, a number of different funding sources from federal sources and things like that. Not, none of the slide will show you the overall Prop ninety-eight budget, but you can see it's comprised of the Department of Ed. Other sources and some teacher retirement system contributions. So again, these are just initial thoughts that we copied from School Service California and Capital Advisors. You can see that K through, K through twelve education was not the highlight of Governor Newsom's press conference, which, you know, we all would love it to be. The budget news is good, but doesn't meet the high K through twelve expectations set by the legislators and Legislative Analyst Office. In, in November, and Rick mentioned that's the information we used in our first interim and that we were targeting. We'll get into how they differ in a slide here. And I think this is another one, emphasis on the new state policies and programs. So this budget emphasizes state policies and programs instead of boosting L C F F. Our local control funding formula is disappointing. So, and then fiscal conditions, just a little precursor, this is based on a healthy economy. This was the governor's budget, all the, the fiscal information was pre-Omicron. And, you know, also looking at tourism coming back and some, some positive future things. So that's just kind of a, a basis of the fiscal conditions in this budget. So here we see the state general fund revenues. As you can see, this governor's budget is projecting a hundred and ninety billion in revenues, which is good because it was up from a hundred and seventy-four in two thousand twenty-one budget act. Because each budget is three years, so that one included the second year. Now we're getting next year's. So that's good. However, you can see that Legislative Analyst Office in November was projecting two hundred million. So that's about a ten, two hundred billion. So that's about a ten billion dollar difference. So just something to be mindful as, and you know, ju- just along with the 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 overview, the, the pattern, this January budget, the governor will come out in May with his May revision after, after the legislature has seen it and the agencies and air, you know, others have had their input on the budget, and then eventually it'll get adopted in June. So again, state revenues are based on the big tat, you know, tax revenues and the big three personal income tax, sales and use tax and corporation tax. You can see the big contributor to the projected state revenues are personal income tax. So if you're following the market, it's been up and the governor's budget includes assumptions that those personal income tax capital day and taxes will continue. And, and continue a pattern of, you know, not looking at any type of significant recession or anything like that. So here is, so, so Prop ninety-eight is the minimum guaranteed. It's the law that the state has to meet a minimum guarantee of funding to to education, and it's based on those state revenues. So you can see this governor's budget is projecting a hundred and two billion in minimum Prop ninety-eight funding. The Legislative Analyst Office in November was projecting a hundred and five million, difference of about three billion. And that's kind of the difference between those revenue projections. But it's up from the two thousand twenty-one budget projections largely because of the healthy economy. In regards to personal income tax, and that is, so the, the one thing about the one personal income tax is that's the majority of our state revenues, but the majority of that is also the one percent affluent in the state. So we really rely on those individuals or those, that group for our state budget. So as you can see, this is kind of going back to that, the, the Governor Newsom's budget, you know, unlike Governor Brown. A lot of the new state revenues and healthy economy and all that minimum state Prop ninety-eight funding, he would put into the L C F F. Which is comprised of our base funding supplemental concentration grant funding for our L cap. And how we do all our basic services operations, and it's our local control. So we can make local decisions on, on what we want to do, spending that money. Or Governor Brown also gave one time local discretionary money. Well, this Governor Newsom is putting new Prop ninety-eight dollars into special categorical programs and specific programs or services with some restrictions that are kind of have state requirements in them. And we'll touch on that a little bit more as we wrap this up. So again, how does this affect Santa Rosa City Schools, local control funding formula? Rick mentioned, it's really not boosting our Santa Rosa City Schools projections because we use the Legislative Analyst Office. And the Legislative Analyst, the Legislative Analyst Office, what they did in November, they came out with the statutory COLA, which is the minimum required by law. So that's what we got from in Governor Brown's budget proposal in January, the statutory COLA, five point three-three percent. And so that's what we'll be moving forward until the May revise and maybe the governor will add an augmentation to that minimum. COLA, which he did last year, he added the augmentation, but that was more to catch up because he zeroed it out the year before. But, so that is the status of our local control funding formula. Moving into some things that are touched in the local, or the governor's budget and that aren't in local, in the governor's budget that affect our L C F F. Our, you know, our, our L cap is funded off the supplemental, supplemental concentration grant funding. We generate those dollars based on our unduplicated pupil count. And that is English learners, foster youth and economic disadvantaged students. How we report or how we identify our economic disadvantaged students largely is based on their free and reduced meal applications. And included in the budget, governor's budget this year, which we'll touch on in a future slide, is the implementation. And, and it was actually in two thousand twenty-one as well. It's at, this year, it is included in the prior year, so it's nothing new, but they're continuing universal free meals. And what that does is it eliminates the need for that free meal application. So we've created a alternative income form, and we've asked our local, our parents and guardians to fill those out and return those. But there's less incentive to respond, to respond, you know, to turn those back in without the need for free meals. So that was something that the statewide people are talking about in, and we're hoping to see something of that addressed in the governor's budget. But nothing was included in the two twenty-two, twenty-three governor's budget proposal to address this issue. And we'll be looking forward to May revise to see if anything is. With the covid, we have not met our historical ratio of enrollment to average daily attendance. So our numbers are down in that area. Our, remember, our L C F F is funded based on average daily attendance. California is one of six states that funds their school districts on average daily attendance. So, but there were some things in the budget to help alleviate that. There were, you could use a three-year rolling average, the hold harmless. You can use like, you guys are greatest current year, prior year, or the average of three prior years. So really, this is mainly the average of three prior years or the hold harmless that's in place. That was in the proposal, and we look forward to something more in May on that. There is currently a Senate bill, eight thirty, that would establish the process for schools to pay based on enrollment. There are some strings attached to that, like at least fifty percent of L A A's supplement to their aid, to their, to this would have to address chronic absenteeism. So it wouldn't just be a all-out funding based on enrollment, but it's hard. You know, we have to plan for and spend for full enrollment. We're on the hook for all of that. So if we only get ninety percent of our full enrollment, getting the revenues for ninety percent, even though we have to pay for a hundred percent. It's not, it's, it's not the easiest model to operate on. But then the deadline for lawmakers to introduce new bills to address this is February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, so we'll see if something comes in. But those are two things, the unduplicated pupil count and the attendance that will, that are tough this year. And we're, we're hoping to get some help in the state budget and will be part of our second interim report as well.
Joel, I have, I have a question real quick. I was wondering about the deadline. Do, do we, is there, is there any talk or is there any knowledge of legislator introducing any type of bill at this time?
That's a great point. So when we were in the School Service California workshop, they, they, this was part of their highlights. So I'm, I'm assuming they are saying that there's likely some more Senate bills to come, or there's something that will you know, that this is a hot topic around the state. I certainly know that a lot of school districts are facing challenges and there's average groups that are arguing that it's just not right to fund based on nine percent when we have to pay for a hundred percent. So.
But we don't at the time have an identified champion on this that we could lobby.
So yeah, that's fair. Yeah. I mean, if, if there is certainly the point to, 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 to raise awareness that February eighteenth is the deadline, if anybody wants to do anything or get something going. But, and to date, there's only this one S B eight thirty that is in existence that is officially known now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
But certainly, Director or President Sheffield, that could change when the omnibus trailer bill is released.
Right, yeah.
In, in the next couple of weeks with its first draft. So we'll be, like I said earlier, eagerly anticipating that release. So we can see how some of this funding that's been either allocated in here or talked about. If there's verbiage, if you will, behind it in that or within the May revision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so our, our school employer pension costs, no change there, so no relief. And no you know, bad news. It's still increasing going to next year, a good amount. The few, the out years stay a little, you know, stay fairly the same, but you know, so I, I was, you know, to see no L C F F real push other than the statutory COLA and, and CalSTRS, you know, we're, we're looking forward to May revision. And hopefully there's a lot of advocacy that are, have their input with the governor in these regards. So again, what you do see in the budget are some proposed statewide specific categorical programs or services. So I've created a list here again, in two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, like in twenty-one, twenty-two. The only opportunity for distance learning will be independent study, the same route, you know, there'll be trailer bill and more information as we enroll that, unravel that. But, and there's also some, some improvements to the way we take attendance and there, the way we enroll students into independent studies. So they did identify some improvements and make some, some changes, but it's, 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 it's sticking with independent study as is in two thousand twenty-two. Again, the continued transitional kindergarten rollout where we're gradually through two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. I think that's the year we're gonna have it universal to all five-year-olds, but we're gonna continue tapering that in as the years go by. Again, the governor is continuing with the expanded learning opportunities program. So like, just like we passed our extended, expanded, expanded learning opportunities plan. We'll have another one of those in our, in, they'll have increased funding in that area. Again, the school nutrition, they've continuing with meals for all. I think they're required to give two meals to every student. There was special education in the budget. Good amount of information. One thing that is coming out is increase in those revenues. Now, one thing we do, we are a member of a CELPA, so those revenues still run through the CELPA to school districts. But they're, they're making some changes in relations to CELPAs and school districts for a little more transparency. And again, college and career pathways, there's a, a, a number of grants included in this budget for those educated workforce. Investing in transportation, there's a number of different funding sources for electric buses. They really are looking at that in this budget. And then there's some, also some state dollars for school facilities that we can look at. There, an expansion of the Prop fifty, I think they're, they're funding the remaining project Prop fifty-one and some other areas. So these were the those specific categories of services. So, and inside these, there's more detail and as, as, as the trailer bills come out, there'll be more information on this. And as we move through the winter and the fall, we'll get the actual allocations for Santa Rosa and how those dollars will funnel to us. But these are the areas that we'll be building programs and services around. And then again, our standalone category programs that we've been running and that, that will, they'll continue. So our ACES program, C T E. So some of these aren't even applicable to us. I probably should have cut these out of that, this slide. I just kind of copied this slide. But then proposing for ongoing funding that, that COLA, you know, our special education, our child nutrition federal. Our, our child, we get that from state and federal sources, our and then our mandated block grant, which we do apply for, and our Indian Ed. So we'll continue with the five point three percent COLA in those categories. So that was kind of a very brief overview of those, of the state budget and the programs in our L C F F. You know, as what's next, the state budget committee hearings, now that the budget to release, it'll get analyzed. The trailer bill language will come out. We'll have our second interim by March fifteenth. Our governor's May revision will present by May fifteenth, or I think it come, maybe it on or before May fifteen, I think it comes out on or before May fifteenth. And then we'll bring that update to these budget items in, in the end of May and see how the May revise compares to kind of what we want over here today. And then in Jan, in June, the state budget will be finalized and our budget will be finalized. So with that, I think that there's any questions or comments or clarifications?
Thank you, Joel. This is a discussion item, so we're bringing it back to the board for questions at this time. I'm looking at the time as well. So if we can be succinct and brief, we have trustee Flores's hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Joel. Just quickly, I'd like to see, I, I, I saw a difference in especially in the special education rate. Right, that, that we can reimburse, it looks like it went up from seven fifteen to eight hundred and twenty dollars. So that's what a hundred and five dollars difference there. So just, you know, a future reference, I'd like to know how that will affect our, you know, our general funding. Because I know special ed has been, you know, encroaching our general funding for many years. So just keep an eye on that, you know, next time. you know, encroaching our general funding for many years. So just keep an eye on that, you know, next time we, we, we hear more about, you know, how much funding we're actually getting from SALPA. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we certainly will. Yeah, that's a great point.
Thank you, trustee Flores. Other questions? Seeing none, moving on to public comment, the public comment on this discussion item.
If there are members of the public who would like to comment on item E13, please raise your hand. And Robert Johns would like to comment.
Hi again, this is Robert John, school psychologist with the district's preschool programs. I'm just commenting because I, I know that cuts are coming up in the future and I'm hoping when those ideas are brought to the table that we're not seeing special education highlighted like we have in previous years. Especially dressed up as taking back classrooms as a way to save money. Special education should be funded based on IEP need and not on district budget preference. I'm going to say side note, let's be really cautious of how we speak about the quote unquote encroachment on the general fund, because that does have implications on how we see our students with disabilities. I also heard mention of facility spending and with the universal TK requirements, I'm really hoping that we could get creative and use that funds and other funds to make sure that all TK classrooms have bathrooms in them and especially special education TK classrooms where large students or large portion of the students are still in diapers and working on toilet training. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert.
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much. Okay. We're bringing it back to the board for discussion or further questions. Seeing no hands raised.
Just, I just want, just one quick comment in line with what with Robert just mentioned. I really appreciate the framing of how we're talking about what we do with resources and how we're centering kids who really need us to understand that they're not encroaching, that they're just part of our responsibility. And so, you know, I just want to elevate that for a second. When we, when we think about resource allocation, when we think about what we're doing with scarce resources, when things start to change, this feels like a really important thing for us to keep right in the middle of what it is that we do. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, trustee De La Cruz. All right, seeing no other hands raised for questions. Thank you again, Joel. Thank you, Rick. For the update and we'll be following closely, seeing how things progress as we move closer to the May revise date. Hopefully things are working in the favor of schools. Thank you so much. All right, board, we are looking at the clock. We have about 20 minutes to wrap things up. We're on our F items, our consent items. And I don't believe we had any items polled from the public. So looking for approval of our consent items.
To prove items of two through F7.
Thank you, trustee Medina. Second, all right, moved by trustee Medina, seconded by trustee Fong, approval of consent items, ready for a vote?
Director Medina. Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. G, approval of minutes. Seeking a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January 12.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January 12th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee McCormick, seconded by trustee De La Cruz. We're ready for a vote.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director Fong.
I.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
I, thank you. Motion passes. All right. Any board member requests for information? Seeing no hands raised. Thank you. Moving on, information items available for all to see. And before we adjourn, I guess I want to bring it back to superintendent Tranel, if you have anything to end the meeting on.
Thank you. Just thanks to those that are still with us. Thanks to all of our presenters tonight. We had some amazing guest presenters with us. All the hard work that we do, we can't do without the partners in the community, the input and feedback, all focused and being student centered. So I look forward to the coming months when we continue to discuss several of the meaty items that we brought forward tonight.
All right. As long as we have no further orders of business, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Good night. Thank you.
Great night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.